Gotta have that PowerPoint on.
Do we want to start with, there's some big introductions, I think, our planning commissioners and board members all night? Well, I will kick things off then, I am Cody Brown, the town's planning director. And the first item that we're presenting at this work session is a presentation on draft land use code. The, I have a slideshow and we're gonna get to it here as quickly as I can load it up.
Sorry guys, I'm trying to get the right video, this is probably wrong.
And so, just kind of giving some background information. The planning commission has been working on the land use code. Well, let me take one step further back, the town has undertaken an update of the comprehensive plan, which culminated in adoption of that plan in August of 2021. And following adoption of the comprehensive plan, that's the vision for the community, and the next step is the land use code, which is the first piece of regulation that implements the vision of the comprehensive plan. We've done a complete review of the entire land use code and are proposing a broad range of changes to modernize the code, make it more readable and user-friendly, address some new emerging technologies, updating development practices and best practice standards, and trying to incorporate some things that weren't in the prior land use code. All kind of a cohesive picture that represents the broad spectrum of needs that the community has for any new development proposals or redevelopment proposals. We've been discussing that draft plan with the planning commission for six months, seven months now, in pieces, we've kind of broken it out into manageable chunks. And we're now to the point where we've got a complete first draft of the land use code, and that's what was in the planning packet, or the, excuse me, the board packet. The planning commission took a first look at that at the last meeting, and we have that information on the town's website as well. So, that's kind of high level, what we've been working on in the piece that's being presented tonight. At this time, while I continue to get the rest of the information loaded up here, I'd like to introduce Jen Gardner from Logan Simpson, who's been a consultant with the town for the comprehensive planning and land use code. Jen, how would you like to do the introduction?
Yes, sure, absolutely. Right there, be great.
Alright, hello everybody, I think I've met most of you before. Jen Gardner with Logan Simpson, I'm the consultant, project manager of the consulting team that's been working on the code update, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
Waiting for the presentation.
Alright, let's kick it around, John, why don't you go ahead?
John Gator, I'm on the board of trustees.
Rebecca Kenny, I am a planning commissioner and on the board of trustees.
Eric Sardar, I'm chairman of the planning commission.
Bert McCaffrey, past chairman.
Current member.
Current member.
Linda Kehack, member of the planning commission.
Ashley McDonald, board of trustees.
Troy Hammond, mayor of planning commission.
Tim Whitehouse, I was gonna say mayor, that's not the word. I don't want that. I know what you do, I have no interest.
Sort of corrollating.
One, one quick thing, Patty can't be here tonight, she's dealing with some pretty serious family issues, so you know, guys, let's keep her on our thoughts. If we can get her back soon, if she can get through her stuff, it's pretty difficult, I'm sure. That's it. Well, here we got staff, though, the staff wanna go?
Sure, Dan Sapienza, town attorney.
Kelly Hodeling, deputy town commissioner.
DJ Jones, water treatment superintendent.
Ross Hodgins, library director.
Crystal Iger, county clerk.
Alrighty.
Jen, do you wanna go ahead and start with those first couple of slides? I'm nearly there.
Sorry, I need to pull it up too. Do you even have a printout of the packet?
Oh my.
Wow, that's.
No, that sheet right there, I can explain the, the spreadsheet.
Oh yeah.
The reorganization.
Yeah, no, you guys broke the record, five, four hundred and ninety-nine. It's not something you should be proud of.
So, while Cody brings that up, I can go through it based on this, because that's basically the PowerPoint, so. Like Cody said, we've been working on this project since the conception of the comprehensive plan that rolled into the land use code update. We actually did an audit of the current code, gosh, in twenty nineteen, early twenty twenty, kind of during the comprehensive plan, trying to figure out where we would wanna try to go with this code update. And part of that effort was to do a reorganization, so the, the first part of what you see in your packets is the proposed reorganization of the code. The current code, there's, there's, it's in the municipal code, there's three chapters, there's the annexation, which is chapter fifteen. Chapter sixteen is zoning, chapter seventeen is subdivisions. Sixteen is where the bulk of the land use code is, with the zoning regulations between zoning, or general provisions, definitions, design standards, non-conforming uses, lists out details, out several use categories, sign regulations, vested property rights. And then subdivisions, currently in the current code, has everything for subdivisions, it has the application procedures and any other regulatory information, so we proposed a reorganization to kind of create what's called more like a unified development code or a land use code, where all of those three chapters from the mini-code are pulled over into this unified code with nine chapters, so now you have chapter one as your general provisions, kind of all your front-end stuff, and a lot of that stuff is, is new. There were a couple pieces and parts from the current code, but a lot of that information is new, just establishing the name of the code, the effective date, and kind of the tie to some of the other other code, other parts of the code. The application procedures, chapter two is also a lot of new information. We pulled any application procedures that were existing from the subdivision section, from the annexation section. Those are probably the two primary areas that actually had application procedures spelled out. And what we mean by application procedures, it's, it's when an applicant comes in, what steps do they take to make that application? So we pulled all of that into a chapter by itself, and added application procedures for several, several new, let's see, for the comprehensive plan amendment, so if you are going to amend the comprehensive plan, we created a process for that. For rezoning, any kind of property is rezoned, there wasn't a, a process spelled out in the current code for that. Administrative amendment, which gives an option for a certain threshold of amendment, if it's under a certain threshold, it can be approved administratively. We created a process for that. Lot line adjustment, which is very similar to an administrative adjustment, it's for when you just are, you know, moving a lot line five feet one way or the other, something to that degree. Easement adjustment, similar, a minor deviation, condo or townhome flat, and revised final flat, so those are all some of the new application procedures that were rolled into this. Oh, there we go. So I'll just continue through the reorganization and then we can go through that process really quick, so just hold there for a second. Then we have a third chapter on zoning districts, which combines all the zone districts into one chapter. The use regulations, again, combines all the use regulations that were currently existing in the current code and some new use regulations and updated them. The development standards combines all of your design standards, sign regulations from subdivision and from the zoning chapter into one consolidated chapter. Subdivision regulations, we pulled some out of the subdivision regulations, chapter streamlined that and put, put some of that information in different places. Nonconformities has its own chapter now, floodplain regulation has its own chapter, it's a little bit easier to administer the floodplain regulations because Cody can just hand it off to the floodplain administrator and they have all their information in one place. And then one chapter at the very end that consolidates all definitions, so that's how we've had proposed the reorganization from the beginning and have now completed that, so now we'll switch to the slideshow. As we already stated, you can go down to the next slide, Cody. The process started in summer of twenty twenty with stakeholder interviews. We met with several members of the community. Primarily people who have used the code, developers, architects, engineers. We met with many different components of staff, planning commission, to try to assess what needed to be updated and changed with the code. As part of that process, we were working on the landscape and irrigation design standards and met with some HOA members and some landscape designers, so that kind of dovetailed into this process. In December of twenty twenty, we completed that code assessment. And then in twenty-one, spring of twenty-one, we kicked off that landscape and irrigation standards effort, which really ramped up the, the code effort on the tail end of the completion of the comprehensive plan. And we've already gone through the reorganization. So the general provisions, as I said earlier, is largely new information, establishing that effective date and kind of title of the code and adding reference to relationship to the comprehensive plan, so we tie the comprehensive plan to the code in that general provision section. In chapter two, the application procedures, as I said, we consolidated all the application procedures into this chapter. We did an overall purpose and organization section at the beginning to kind of just help guide through that, that section. Specific application processes and expanded application procedures for appeals, there is, there were application procedures in your current code. We just expanded upon that to make it a little bit more clear. We did incorporate a table at the very beginning of the chapter, which has decision-making authorities and public noticing, so every single application type has the decision-making authorities and the public, public noticing process over to the right, so. Tried to put as many tables in as we could to kind of help, help the readability and usability. Zone districts, again, we consolidated all the zone districts into one section. This section did see a few additional changes, kind of reorganizing the residential zone districts and renaming them a little bit, updating the purpose statements, so. R1 was renamed residential rural density, R2 was renamed residential low density, and then R3 and R4 were combined and renamed residential medium density. R3 right now is the higher density and R4 is the senior housing. But there wasn't a huge distinction between the two and the use categories and everything, so we've combined those and created a new R4 for the downtown neighborhood. And then all the dimensional standards that were in a separate portion of the code, we've incorporated to pair up with these zone district descriptions.
And I was just gonna add on this one, a lot of the, the changes that were being made were based on feedback and recommendations from the comprehensive plan. Another notable change is elimination of the transitional zone district, which has created a lot of confusion and consternation for owners and potential purchasers as well. So what we've done with the transitional zone district is focus on identifying what the land uses could be for these various zone districts. And then when we update the official zoning map, we'll identify with those property owners what the appropriate zoning for those transition, the currently transitional zone properties, what they would be changed to and how that would affect the property ownership.
Yeah, and actually, we didn't mention it on that side, but we also kind of tuned up the commercials on districts, commercial and industrial zones on districts, so C1, C2, and C3 had a lot of similar uses. So it was hard to differentiate between the three, so we tried to really separate them out as, you know, community, commercial versus downtown, commercial. And then same with industrial, really tried to separate out heavy industrial and light industrial. And that will show up more in the use regulations than in the descriptions, but we tried to tune the descriptions a little bit more to be more specific, so. Within the use regulations, we combined use regulations from articles nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, thirteen and a half, which is your new one, and sixteen. Combined all the uses from the zone district article into a table, so. We, what we did is, all of the uses that in the, and currently they're just listed in the zone districts. And so we combined those all into a, an overall table, and so all down the side you see the uses, and across the top you see the sound districts. And then you have, you know, cross-tabulated to whether a certain use is permitted or conditional in a certain zone district, and so it's, it's, it's right up front, all, you know, on a couple of pages, so a little easier to, to navigate. We allocated each land use and the use table by land use categories. Proposed new use regulations to mitigate potential adverse development impacts, so. Basically, each, any use that would have any adverse impacts, specifically some of the industrial uses, entertainment businesses, anything that could have an impact, which would be traffic impacts or noise or smell, some of those types of impacts that can be mitigated. We listed specific standards to help mitigate, and some of those are distant standards, you know, a certain distance away from other types of uses to help mitigate, and some of those are buffering standards, so. Kind of incorporated that and established temporary and accessory use sections. The development standards, this is always one of the biggest chapters of, of any codes, because we combined article three and fourteen, the sign standards from the subdivisions. So we have, and we brought in the sign code as well, so we have your street standards, your landscape standards, your sign standards. I should know this all off the top of my head, it's, it's a big chapter. Parking, right, parking is in there. And so it has, it has kind of all the design standards, so you have your zone districts and your uses, and then you have what you can do in, you know, how you can do everything within those areas, so. We did tune up the sign code quite a bit, the sign code in the current code is very minimal, so we've added quite a bit to that, and there's some case law that really drove a lot of, a lot of that, some, some legal case law. We did revise sign types and add some clarity and certainty to some different sign types and a few graphics in there as well. We used original and national best practices to create context-sensitive parking regulations. Reese Wilson, one of our partners in crime on this project, he's, I think he's listening, but he did a great job of really creating a kind of a customized parking program or parking regulations for the town. Using minimum parking ratios provided for each land use, next slide. And providing downtown-specific parking approaches, so just kind of tailoring the parking to different, different use types within, within the town. We added loading regulations, strengthened the lighting standards to reduce light pollution and protect dark sky preferences, incorporated the landscape and irrigation standards from that standalone project, and added new graphics and tables to improve the readability, so especially the parking section, there's a couple of new tables in the sign code as well. Subdivisions, like I said before, we, we actually pulled a lot of language out of this, so your, the streets and the landscaping and lighting, a lot of those were in the subdivision portion currently, so we pulled those over to those development standards to pair it up. Pulled the application procedures into the application procedures chapter, and then just cleaned this chapter up mostly and added clarifying language for open space dedication, there was some confusion as to, there was some pieces in there that kind of led you to believe that there was an open space dedication, but there was no specific call out to that, so we added that language in there. Nonconformities is mostly new language and clarifies certain development situations, nonconformities are tricky and very important, because anytime you adopt a new code, you end up with certain structures or land uses that don't conform to the new code, so this sets out procedures and and requirements for what, what to do with those moving forward. And we strengthen the limited existing nonconforming regulations. Floodplain regulations were actually in pretty good shape, a lot of floodplain regulations, they, they follow FEMA. And so yours were pretty much in line with FEMA regulations. So we did a little bit of cleanup and formatting for ease of use and added a couple of things on anchoring within your floodplain area, special hazard areas, but other than that, there wasn't a lot of major substantive changes to the floodplain regulations. And then definitions, so we always remove irrelevant terms, so as we go through the project, you know, there's probably some erroneous terms left over from the nineteen seventies and eighties, so remove those, updated any outdated terms, added new terms relevant to any new language. And then there were a few standards buried in some of the definitions, so we removed those to be clear, because you don't, you don't wanna have, you know, a, a single-family home is X, Y, and Z and should only be thirty-five feet tall, you wanna make sure that that should only be thirty-five feet tall, it's always in the dimensional standards, so. So cleaned up the definitions. And that's, that's pretty much what we did with the code over the last couple of years, I guess, we've sort of been chipping away at it, but really heavily over the last about eight months. So the full draft is available on the town website currently. That's, that's why your packet is four hundred pages long. The code, I will say, is only two hundred and something, so like, just under three hundred. Public comments are welcome and encouraged, there's a comment form on the website, so we, we really do encourage members of the public to, you know, if, if you're interested in one specific portion of the code, you can read the executive summary and kind of get an idea of what, what happened with the code and then kind of look into the section that you're interested in. And then there's gonna be many upcoming opportunities for discussion and public comment. So we have this joint work session this evening. Planning commission hearing on March seventh. Board of trustees presentation on March eighth, board of trustees work session on March fifteenth, and then this is the plan, board of trustees hearing on March twenty-second, and I can let Cody weigh in on any of that, so.
Thanks, Jen.
Yeah.
And, and yeah, there are still opportunities for presentations, discussion, public comments and feedback. We've also reached out to stakeholders in the development community and landscaping community. I talked with the local sign contractor today and we wanna have some dialogue on the sign code and those provisions. So we, we're still gathering some, some feedback on this initial first draft. The, the timeline that you see on the screen right now was proposed, we, we know that there's been a lot of effort put into the comprehensive plan and this land use code update by our current planning commission members and board members. And with the upcoming election, we wanted to be able to have the option that, that those individuals who've put the time and energy into preparing these, these draft documents have the ability to see that process through. It's not a requirement, but we, we wanted to for sure make sure that we had the option to let those individuals be a part of that process. So that's the schedule that we've laid out to, to have that opportunity, and if it needs to change, we can certainly change it down the road. So, that's kind of the overview of the, the draft land use code, and of, of course, as been mentioned a couple of times, there was quite a few pages of information in your packet, including a supplemental design manual for landscape and irrigation that is advisory as opposed to regulatory, but it is best practices, and we wanted to include that element as well, since it is the basis for some of the regulations that are proposed in the land use code in chapter five. And I hope that we've all had an opportunity to read at least some of that, we recognize that that's a lot of material to go through, and you'll probably do some more reading. The planning commission has kind of taken a first crack at a lot of these chapters and given feedback to staff, and we've tried to incorporate those comments in this draft. But we know we've got a couple more meetings where we're gonna hear some more feedback and we'll continue to make necessary revisions. So that's kind of in a nutshell, what we've been working on, and we're happy to discuss any of those chapters tonight. We did invite the planning commission members to this, this joint work session to be available for sharing additional commentary or to be able to answer questions on what the dialogue at the planning commission level looked like in this, in developing these draft recommendations. So, without further ado, I wanna give it back to the board of trustees and the planning commissioners who are here to pose questions, tell us what, from what you've read, what needs additional consideration. And we'll take any feedback and answer any questions. I'll point out too that Reese Wilson is on the call from a distance, but he is been an integral part of this project team, he's with White and Smith Planning and Law Group, has been a big part of this, so he can, Reese can respond to, to questions as well.
It's open. I didn't wanna say it opened mic night. Ask any questions you want, there's no form here.
Have you gotten much feedback from since our last meeting?
I've begun to receive a few emails from individuals, I wouldn't say it's been a lot, but the ones that I've received are providing some pretty good focused.
Something helpful.
And that's a great question, what we're doing, and we didn't bring that tonight because we didn't wanna confuse what was in the packet with new information, but what we're doing, staff is tracking all the comments that we receive, and we're gonna keep that in a spreadsheet that we can bring back to the planning commission and the board to show, this is the feedback we received. Here are the sections that are affected and some options to consider in terms of what those revisions might look like to address the comments.
On that question, how's that process gonna work as far as incorporating those before we're back to a proposed final draft? Because I think the next time this comes back to a public meeting after that, this is the planning commission adoption. So how's that process gonna be of presenting feedback? Presenting options to change based off that feedback before we're in a final draft, that's the concern I have. I understand the timeline, but we have this meeting, the next meeting is coming back to the planning commission for their, basically their final say at it. And that doesn't leave time for them to talk about the feedback, for them to give changes that we wanna see. And then it does come back to us for one more work session. But for a lot of us on the board of trustees, this is our first time looking at this. So that does concern me, is how are we gonna incorporate that? And really capture the planning commission's thoughts, the board's thoughts, and those community comments before we look into the final draft?
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna track it all and present it in terms of, this is what we heard. This is what we're proposing. And we're gonna identify, we're gonna track the changes in the document, so it's clear and transparent what changes were made. And we'd be happy to, you know, provide any additional information or context as to how those revisions look. Certainly, we do get a lot of feedback on, you know, personal preferences, and sometimes there are legal reasons why things are worded the way they're worded, so we'll explain all of those when we present that back to the planning commission and the board in future meetings.
So my question is, when is that being presented, is that gonna be presented back to the planning commission on the day they're asked to to approve a final draft, that's the concern I have. When are you presenting this back to them? Because the next scheduled meeting is them approving a final draft. That means that there's no way for them to say, well, actually, we think this should change unless they're just gonna say we don't approve it.
So the next, the next meeting of the planning commission is what we're advertising for a public hearing. The planning commission does not have to adopt at that meeting, that's their opportunity to, to hear public comments as well. So we'll be presenting all the, the comments and revisions that we have received up to that point. Part of this process too is allowing time for the public to see the information and provide some feedback, so we're gonna be presenting all that we have up until the agenda goes out for the planning commission meeting, and then the planning commission can evaluate the information, and we'll do the same thing for the board of trustees.
So is the planning commission then not being asked at the March meeting to give an approval of that document? Or are, I, I don't understand, you say public hearings, that just mean we're hearing it and then we're moving on, or are they actually being asked to vote yes or no based on what they presented, because what they presented will not incorporate their thoughts on what we should address in terms of public comments, because they will be presented with the public comments at that meeting, so obviously those changes won't be in the document, so are they not being asked to either approve or not approve on the March meeting, or what's the plan?
So, we advertise the, the public hearing, and that's the, that's the process for the planning commission. Following the, the public hearing, the planning commission can either choose to forward recommendation of approval to the board of trustees, they can instruct staff to make additional revisions. They can, the, the, the option is up to the planning commission for what they do with the information being presented. We're scheduling the public hearing because that's a regulatory step, that we need to allow the public comment. And so we wanna get to that point, and then we'll see, based on the feedback that we have and the planning commission's recommendations, we can then take that on to the board of trustees or bring it back to the planning commission for further consideration.
Cody, if I could clarify to, or a quick question, how long has the online public comment forum been available? When did that start?
The, I don't have an exact date, but the online comment forum has been available for a number of months.
Number of months.
And the information has been presented in the planning commission packets, those are open meetings.
Right.
So the, some of the information has been rolled out in pieces.
Trusty Gator, I guess the, the version that you're looking at tonight has been available for public comments since our meeting on whatever it was, since our February planning commission. So I think the, the concept or the idea is that opening this up for online public comment for essentially thirty days, plus public comment at the February work session, plus another open public comment section at the March meeting, understanding that it will be after the changes are basically inked down. What more public comment is gonna come in that is groundbreaking, that is gonna alter decisions on a vote at that point after having been open for thirty days? So here's the question, and I agree, I don't think that there's more. Is the concern is, is that what I've been told is Cody will at your March meeting be presenting you as the planning commission, because maybe you've gotten emails, have you gotten emails with all the public comment that's come in yet?
No.
So my understanding, Cody, is you're going to present that feedback at the March meeting, so that will be the first time you as the planning commission are going to see that feedback. So that will be the first time you as the planning commission are going to see that feedback and then you're going to be asked, what should we do with this feedback? On the same day that you're having to decide whether to pass and we don't have enough time. Technically, if we're trying to hit a board approval at the end of March for the plan, that's my concern. Not that there's needs to be more public comment, is that you're being presented the public comment, being asked to make a decision on the spot. Do we approve this? Because obviously we're not going to be sitting here rewriting the code.
Sure.
As you're sitting in the meeting. That's the problem I have with the timeline. It's not with that we need more time, is it? That if we're not being presented the public comment until the day of making decision, you can't, unless you just decide, okay, we're not going to approve this today because there needs to be more changes. But that's kind of what that March public comment will, will tell.
I have a quick question for you. I apologize for interrupting, but how often, like how quickly in advance to the planning commission? Do you receive your planning commission packet?
Generally, the Friday before Monday.
So you are, so in theory, you'll receive the public comment in that packet, correct? So you'll be reviewing that information prior to the planning commission meeting.
Correct, several days before.
I just want to be clear because the perception is being painted that they won't see the public comment information until the day of the meeting, and that's not true.
Apologies, yes.
I think that's important to understand.
And, and just, and that's a great point for clarity. Maybe I misunderstood what you were asking, but that's absolutely the intent. Is that the public comments that staff receives will be consolidated, summarized and provided in the planning commission packet that goes out before the meeting.
I understand that.
Yeah.
That's your right, White House, go ahead and then I'll try to clarify my question.
What if someone to clarify? So who is actually, this is regulatory, so the approval comes from the board of trustees or the planning commission? Planning commission only provides a recommendation, but the final vote, in this case, unlike the comprehensive plan, sits with the board of trustees, is that correct?
That is correct. The board of trustees makes the final decision. The planning commission is obligated to provide recommendations to the board of trustees on legislative matters.
A quick follow up to trustee Whitehouse's question. And you might jump back to that slide, but what would be the drop dead date that you would need comments from trustees? Like the, on the comp plan, it was encouraged for us to provide our comments through the online platform. That way, you know, it's included with everybody else's. What would be the, like the end date for you guys to have the information that would be important for planning commission?
From the public or from trustees?
From the trustees.
From trustees. You know, I, I'm not going to paint a picture where there has to be a, an absolute drop dead. But in terms of getting, if you're providing feedback to staff to make revisions, we do need to have some time to, to get that incorporated. Then re-present it in a, in a budget pack or a, a board packet. And so we would need to have that probably, you know, at least a few days before the agenda deadline for that upcoming meeting.
So that would be like, so.
For March twenty second, so that'd be.
For March seventh.
Yeah. Oh, for the planning permission meeting, yeah. So we would need to have that probably first of March to get it in front of the planning commission packet.
Okay, thank you.
Also, the planning commission has already provided a significant amount of feedback on this draft as well, that would be included in the next draft. After more thorough research, best practices and legal reviews of our best, of our suggestions. So this wouldn't be the first time that the planning commission has provided input based on public comment for the next draft. So it's not the only one and done time that we're providing feedback. We've been doing that for months at this point. And then specifically on this draft, more like the final view of it that we've seen in this draft that's available. We've provided some really clear and really big feedback items to kind of almost redo several sections. So by no means is that one day the only time that the planning commission will provide feedback. So that all, that's a big consideration there too. A lot of those are based off, sorry, a lot of those are based off of correlation to the conference of plan. And then feedback that was related to conference of plan feedback as well.
Previous survey is related to.
And a lot of surveys, yeah.
Well, so public comment's been ongoing for, for months.
I would encourage anybody who has not had the joy of reading this from cover to cover. If you got to look at this, I, I would, I would set up some time, some significant time. It's pretty thick in spots. It gives a lot of very specific guidance and it's enough to make your answer, at least it is for me. This is not a quick read. This is not a quick read. It's, it's really important, so yeah, dig into it.
It makes so much more sense than our codeless people are though. The organization is so much easier to follow. Graphics, tables make it easy for anybody to understand setbacks. Those things were very confusing before.
A serious improvement.
Yeah.
Serious improvement. A lot of work been done, a lot of public comments been done. I've been looking at it for a long time. And I do think, so when you get your public comment, that, that, that last time you give it to the planning commission, are you going to try to insert some of that, those changes or are you just going to list them? What are you going to do?
Right, we, we are going to draft some, some revisions that we'll track, so it's pretty clear what changes are being proposed. Staff and Logan Simpson and White and Smith Planning and Law Group are going to make initial suggested revisions based on the feedback we receive.
And the reason why I ask that is because you, you've been watching us, you've seen the public comment, you've seen what, how we feel. That we want to generally align with the public for the most, you know, on a lot of things. So you know those touchy subjects, expect to see some, some, you know, a, a tippment at some of that. Now so that when we get all that, we can be effective in that review and actually pass this thing at the planning.
Yeah, we're, we definitely have a pretty, pretty good feel on where, where the community has.
I think, I think you do too. I think you do.
So we're going to propose some possible revisions based on what we've heard in the past and any new comments that we, that we've received to be able to address those comments in a timely way.
Yeah. So personally, I'm ready for the review when it comes up for the planning.
Okay, so I just want to make sure to clarify because I think that, I'm not saying that there's not public comments. So my clarification is staff and Logan Simpson will be looking at the comments from the public. They will be making revisions based on those comments and then providing those revisions to the planning commission and to the board. Not providing the, the board and planning commission with the public comment and letting them decide what should be revised. You are deciding on the revisions and then asking us what we think about those revisions. Is that accurate?
We will provide both. We'll provide a summary of all the comments received and the proposed revisions that we feel as a staff and professionals address the comments. We're not trying to hide what the comments were. We will provide both. The, the essence of the, of providing the revisions is based on the feedback that we're getting. We can propose, this is something we, we feel addresses that comment and then the planning commission, the board can tell us, yes, we agree or no, we think it should be changed.
That clarifies because your initial comment sounded very much like you were going to let the planning commission and board decide what those changes should be versus you guys putting it together. That's why there was a confusion. So that makes much more sense. Thank you.
Thanks for asking the question.
I'd like to add a little bit to that, that this whole process of months and months going through this process. We've even talked about what colors we can put in it because we want to make sure we see, okay, this was a comment, this was, okay, this was a change. Okay, this wasn't a change, this stayed the same. We have had multiple times of this is a change, this is what it says. And we've gone back and forth with that so many times. So I'm completely confident that the public comment will for sure be there, including that, hey, this is what we based on our public comment going forward. And so I'm, like I said, I'm assuming that is, and, and I would expect that to happen too, so. Our feedback and comments, though, I think the important step here is that the planning commission, as much as we are, we've been hearing, we hear applications all the time and those kind of things. We don't have the expertise to write code. And we don't have the legal background to understand First Amendment rights and, and content on signs and how we might be in violation of, of things that would open us up for being sued. So we provide our feedback based on our experience and other projects that we've seen and personal preferences and what we prefer from the community. But it really is up to the professionals and our consultants to make that viable and protect the town from any kind of lawsuits in the future. So that's why we can't just say, hey, switch this, switch this. We'll say, hey, this is what we're hearing. This is maybe an idea that we'd like to see. And then they have to do their magic to put it in code to make it viable. So that's why we can't just say, this is changed here. They have to work through those complete sections to acknowledge those. If they're not possible legally, then we can't do it regardless of public comment because it may be something to protect the town in general. So I think if they get more feedback as to why we can't just make a change on, on this fly when we hear that comment, it's, it's way more complicated than that. Thirty-five feet is associated usually with how many stories?
Three.
Three. Three. You're actually. So three, essentially three stories would be the maximum anywhere in Wellington based off of residential agriculture, R one, R two, or three, or four and mobile home. So would be the maximum, not saying they're all thirty-five feet. That was something I didn't pay attention to before and I was kind of enlightened by that today. But that kind of correlates to the community survey where they said they really like, for example, downtown buildings that are two stories. Like a Victorian house with a improved attic. So it matched that height requirement that people preferred. Or, you know, craftsmen homes with the, the tall first story and improved attic. So I didn't want to draw attention to that since it came up. Or heights of buildings.
Sorry to interrupt.
Just changing. Yeah, I think that, I think that also it would, it also I think is, like if you want to put a wind turbine up in downtown, which I don't think would be a great place for it. I think that can't be more than thirty-five feet tall as well, even though I don't believe that's where it is. I don't know, well, I don't know what's tall.
Right, so an accessory structure like, like was described, the wind turbine is, it would still be subject to the same height limitations. We, I have seen work in some other codes where like flag poles are exempt from the height restrictions. Bell towers or, or some limited rooftop equipment like an AC unit. There, there are some reasonable things that are exempted from the height restrictions in a lot of codes. And we can take a look at that if that's a, a need or desire here.
I don't, I'm not really interested in that. I was just making sure that thirty-five feet correlated to what we saw in the survey, so that sounds right to me.
It, it is what we've seen in most of the surveys and I'll, I'll tell you that thirty-five feet is the standard maximum height for, for most residential. When you get into commercial, our, our light industrial, industrial district is currently proposed to allowing up to forty-five feet, which is also common for, for that type of construction. When you get above the three stories for residential and many commercial projects, it opens up a whole different ballgame for the building code requirements that just most people don't go to those degrees for that type of development because of the cost implications to meet other codes. And so thirty-five feet is really a good zone for, or a good height for, for those residential zone districts.
I'm on page eighty and eighty-one, if anybody's following along for this.
So is that packet page or is that?
Packet page.
Okay, you said what, eighty-one?
Eighty and eighty-one.
Okay, thank you. Because the code has its own adulation.
And then the only one that's higher than that would be C three, which says forty-five feet, which would be like a hotel.
Right.
Okay.
That's a, that's a really good example. I've seen some like, you know, standalone emergency rooms or hospitals will often go that high or similar C three commercial types of room.
Okay, and that's only ten feet higher, so.
You started talking about parking at the last meeting and I decided to silence you because it was getting late. How, any major changes on this minimum parking requirement table? The new draft version versus what's currently in place, has anything really changed much?
Yeah, it has a little bit. One of the, and I'm going to ask Reese to, to step in and provide some of the background for how those, those recommendations were, were formulated based on research, best practices and other neighboring communities. But I'll start high level and say that, you know, we've heard in several meetings loud and clear that we need to make sure that our minimum parking space dimensions stay the same that they are right now at ten by twenty, that accommodates larger vehicles, which we see frequently here in Wellington. So that isn't changing, but the, the ratios we are proposing to update to be a, a better fit for Wellington's needs for specific land use types. Reese, could you give us a, a quick overview on the methodology behind the parking standards?
Yeah, so the first thing I did was, you know, usually when we do these.
We can't hear you just yet. Is there, we might need to unmute a speaker here.
It's still nine by eighteen on the table here, so you know. Parking dimensions, they're still nine by eighteen.
Can, can, can you hear me now?
Okay, well, and that's, yeah, we'll, we'll touch on that too. We did look at some specific areas. Nine by eighteen is a more common parking space dimension in most other communities. Ten by twenty is a little bit more obvious. We understand the why. And I think we made some of those recommendations either based on zone districts or opposed use of downtown. Focus a little bit more attention on trying to maximize available spaces. It's also possible that we had it in a draft version and we didn't get it updated, so we can take a closer look at that too.
Can, can y'all hear me now?
Nine by eighteen is a minimum also, so.
Right, yeah, that, that did catch my eye.
What about, what about now?
Where is that section? Chapter five. Chapter. Yeah, I'm on the, the website version where it's already broken down into chapters.
Can you? No sound.
Reese, we're, we're working on, on the speakers. We've, we have two different systems set up, so it's created a little bit of a challenge.
Reese, can you try and talk?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Reese, could you? So we can just use the laptop speaker, but it's going to create that reverb.
Recording in progress.
I can try my computer, just first one.
It's running the same issue, the microphone here is going to pick it up and then.
Yeah, can y'all hear me still?
Well, so while, while.
Could we just call him on his cell phone?
Maybe Jenny, do you even get Reese on the, on the phone? While they're doing that. At, at a high level, then Reese can correct me if I, if I misstate. But when we look at the, at the parking provisions, our old, or the current code is a pretty narrow window. It's, it's based on number of parking spaces per square foot area of a building. And what we tried to do was, was get a little more specific and look at specific types of uses. And do they have a different allocation than our current code allows? So we tried to be a little bit more specific and right-size the parking requirements for the actual users instead of just blanketing on a square foot basis.
Yeah, can y'all hear me now?
We can, Reese, thanks.
All right, so let me pick up my headphones in so it's a little bit more, you can hear me clear. Okay, so can you hear me now? I have my headphones in.
Yes, we can, Reese.
All right, do I need to speak up or anything like that?
I think we can hear you good.
Yes, so the kind of, when we usually update parking codes, what we do is, you know, one of the first questions that, you know, our clients ask, well, what are the other jurisdictions doing or what are our neighbors doing? What's, what's pretty typical, you know, for this region of the world? So first thing that we kind of did is we looked at our, the national best practices, it's the first thing we do. The second thing we look at is regional best practices. So we look at similar jurisdictions in the area, in the region, towns that are cities that you would consider that are kind of like your peers or, you know, some, some new languages or new regulations that are related to parking in that area of where you're located. So we did that. You will see some, some parking ratios that are a little bit different. Or it might be like, well, that looks a little bit too low. Well, you might see that. And once again, we understand that this is the first draft. But with our best practices and some of the stuff that we've been looking at across the Mountain West, those are somewhat typical parking ratios. And we understand that some of those parking ratios are. And we understand that some of those parking ratios are really unique. I know in our last meeting that we had in February, there was one about a racetrack, I believe, or, or, or such, a racetrack, or, or a park, or something like that. And it's something that we can always find too. But that's usually our approach. What Cody was talking about earlier about the parking space dimensions, like he said earlier, when introducing parking, a nine by eighteen space is pretty typical around America when it comes to standard parking spaces. Ten by twenty is really abnormally large, and in the initial draft that I, I proposed for parking, we put a nine by eighteen. Now, once again, we can always update to ten by twenty, but the thinking is, if you reduce that minimum dimension from ten, ten by twenty to nine by eighteen, you could possibly get more parking spaces and still accommodate vehicles that are, you know, trucks and all that, SUVs. I live in Dallas, Texas, where, where the home of trucks and big SUVs and most parking codes around here are nine by eighteen, and there's no problem parking your newly, you know, so ten by twenty is a little bit odd to see, especially in a smaller jurisdiction, in, in a relatively rapidly growing area. So that's one of the reasons why you'll, you'll see the nine by eighteen, but once again, we're more than well versed to make that change at ten by twenty. But if you ever see any changes, or you need to make any changes, or have any comments of parking uses, or, 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 you know, limitations, or sizes, or, you know, the ratios, we're, we're here to help you, we're here to get this right for y'all, you know, we can have our, you know, ivory tower moment, it crafts up all the most beautiful parking regulations in the world, but it doesn't do y'all any service if it doesn't, you know, accommodate what y'all need, so that's kind of the reasoning and the rationale behind kind of what I did with the parking.
Thanks, Reese.
Highlight some differences between what we previously had in this one? If you have any offhand.
Some parking specifically.
Per, uh, a thousand square foot.
Yeah, so, um, the, the prior code was, was based on, it was, like, say, um, restaurant was three per hundred square feet. And what we, I mean, restaurants vary quite a bit in size, fast food versus sit-down, all those parameters, and so we have more categories now than we have before. So like restaurant is broken down into fa- fast food, fast food with drive-through, uh, and sit-down, and sit-down restaurants, because you're there longer, you need more parking spaces, so that's six per thousand instead of five per thousand that we have for, for fast food. So, and then, and we tried to do that for, for all, all the land use categories, just being more specific to the types of parking needs that each business type has, as opposed to the blanket one per one hundred, or one per two hundred, one size fits all type of approach. The other, one of the other elements that we added is our, our current code doesn't have any provisions for, or limited provisions for the number of stacking spaces in the drive-through, so we've clarified that, added some, some context to if you have a drive-through, what, how big those spaces are, and how many spaces you need to be able to provide, so that traffic doesn't back up from the drive-through lane out into a public roadway.
That was a big deal for a human being project. That makes sense.
Yeah, that was a really.
How many ours would fit in line at any given time?
That was a really good example.
The sit-down restaurant doubled from current. So I know this isn't going to retroactively take effect to anybody that's already filed an application, but moving forward, I'll just use a box of comments. There are obviously empty lots that are left with minimal parking spaces. Are we going to be able to reconcile six per thousand square feet if a restaurant or another multi-use comes in and wants to plop two restaurants in with limited parking there, or is this effectively killing any of our restaurants at Box Elder?
So just, I want to make a point of clarification, Reese, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the current standard was based on three parking spaces per one hundred square feet of restaurant area. It was, it was, we changed the denomination under which, or it comes out to a different method of looking at it. I'm sorry, it wouldn't be three per hundred, but but the, we, we changed the way we look at it, so that the, the factor's a little bit different. I think in some instances, somewhat to, where the need of additional parking and others went down.
Yeah, you're right, we were, we were like one per, per restaurant, we were one space per every hundred square feet in the current code, and now we have six per thousands.
So it did drop it.
Think that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it drops.
Right, drop requirement, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I.
What I'm talking about?
It, it won't make a difference in a lot of development proposals.
Next to the bank over there?
Yeah, and, and again, I, I think, yes, to, to the specific example, once it's adopted in effect. And again, this, this kind of approach to right sizing based on, on business types versus a, a blanket one size fits all makes a big difference when you're looking at those. And this provides more flexibility in the code too, whereas if our current code has literally three line items for parking, and it's hard to interpret that any differently than what is there. This provides more context.
Right.
Yeah, I was going to say, on Cody's comment, one of the big things that we were tasked with is making sure that kind of every use has the parking ratio associated with it, because in the current code, it's just a blanket kind of use category. You know, there are certain types of, you know, commercial uses that are different than other types of commercial uses, and so you have to have the appropriate parking with that. I mean, the current code is just a blanket category of, you know, commercial or a couple of commercial uses, and then it'd be up to staff to figure out, okay, well, we apply this ratio or that ratio. With this approach that we have here, it's tied directly to the use table, so whenever, you know, a, a new golf course comes up, you can see that, hey, this is what the parking, that's the minimum partner that's required for this. Whenever a new financial institution comes up, this is the type of parking. So the aim is to kind of get more clarity with parking, and also provide parking that works for the community while also giving the developer that opportunity to kind of take control over their own parking demands, you know, that's one thing that is very important in this discussion, is some, some might say, well, these partner ratios are too low. Oh, okay, well, that's, that's, that's fine, that, that's, it's a good comment. But once again, you know, we want to bring that flexibility to the development community. We're giving the developer that option to increase parking. We don't have parking maxims here. So if you're a, a small-time developer, you only need, you know, four parking spaces for a thousand square foot building, go ahead and provide that. What we see in, you know, national practices and outdated codes is we're seeing small-time developers be penalized because they don't have enough space to provide these arbitrary required minimums. If you have a thousand foot, you know, retail space typical suburbia, and they're requiring eight parking spaces, well, you can't do your development just because you can't find eight parking spaces, and so it creates a lot of barriers to entry in the market, especially for these types of towns that are smaller and skinnier and are growing, is you want to, you know, encourage a local investment, want to encourage local ownership, when you have these parking regulations that are pretty restrictive with their minimums, you're hindering that ability to enter the market.
Will say.
Yeah, we see that in projects in Wellington all the time, it comes down to calculating it out constantly. Unless there's anything else on this, could you walk us through the downtown parking section, because that's not something we had before, and I think that previously we weren't, could be very difficult to develop anything downtown just based on the parking requirements alone. So I'd like to see the special accommodations.
Can you talk a little, talk a little bit about that? Once again, this is just an initial draft. I talked with staff, we talked amongst each other about types of approaches and options we can utilize to get a better grasp on parking downtown, and once again, if this is something that is not attractive or won't work, scrap it, no, no, our good ones here. But kind of what I wanted to do in this, in, in the parking section is introduce more, you know, parking adjustments and reductions. And so you'll see, like, there are, you know, five point oh five, point eight, that's where you see adjustments and reductions to parking requirements. And so there's a shared off-street parking agreements, that's, that's a possibility. There's a, a thing called captive market, where you kind of look at the existing businesses and kind of figure out what's the actual best parking ratio, and what can apply if it's within a certain amount of distance. It's also on-street parking credits, which are typically seen in those more walkable urban type of compact development areas of, of your town or city. This is nothing that's, you know, not new to the region, it's not new to America. On-street parking credits are very important, specifically in those downtown kind of urban, walkable areas. And then also, on top of that, we're talking about downtown parking, there's an actual section for downtown parking, which is five point oh five, ten. And there's some language to reduce the parking ratio, and so one, one approach that we've seen, and we've done these, these parking ratios, is it just to have a blanket, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty-five, twenty percent reduction on the required minimum. So how it's proposed right now is, you know, you look at the use tape, I mean, the parking table, parking ratio table, and for any use that comes in to the downtown area, you would automatically apply a twenty percent required parking ratio minimum rate. So, you know, you can take twenty percent off of a, you know, five to one thousand parking ratio. Whatever that, that number is mathematically, that's what you, that's what we, that's what the city, or the town can honor. And once again, this also is the tool to give local, local developers that ability to kind of take control over their parking situation. You don't, you don't have to apply this twenty percent reduction, you know, the language says any property may apply a twenty percent reduction, it doesn't say must, it says they shall, which is mandatory, it says may, which is it's option, it's, it's an option, you know, if the developer, you know, wants to apply that twenty percent reduction, go for it. If they don't, then they can do the regular required minimum in the downtown area. Um, there's also some language with the special parking plan. And this is something that's kind of like that, it's kind of like an additional study, and it, it kind of reduces parking demand if you can provide some other options, or take a closer look at how you can accommodate better walkability, connectivity, and all that kind of, you know, things that you would kind of see in a downtown walkable area. You know, that, this is something that may be a little bit out of scope, but it's something that is not abnormal in most parking codes nowadays. So, that's, that's, that's the approach that we kind of with it. Just a couple of items specifically dedicated to downtown, and if you want more, we can do more, if you want less, we can do less. But at the end of the day, it's, it's up to y'all on where we take this.
I have a question, because there's designated roads indicated in the downtown parking section, could we associate that with a zone rather than a specific set of roads, so that way, if things zoning changes, expands, or the overlay, for example, that area is considered, then everything regarding downtown parking would apply to that entire zone?
I think that's really reasonable. And part of this too, there was some Cleveland Avenue specific parking that's existing in our current code that basically is an attempt to preserve some parking on each lot, so that there's at least some parking for any newer proposed redevelopment. But, but certainly, I think that the, the zone district approach would be a good way to look at that. I want to make one real quick comment on the parking, and I recognize time is running a little bit short, and I want to be respectful. We heard through the comprehensive plan process, and we hear frequently that, that parking downtown is a, is a big challenge. What we tried to do was present a regulatory framework that allows flexibility for decision-makers to apply an appropriate parking standard for the case that's being presented. And then the special parking plan that, that Reese alluded to and is built into this draft code allows for consideration for the uniqueness of that business. And just a real quick, great example in our current downtown, and it's tax season. H and R Block is a downtown business, and they operate primarily on an appointment basis. They need one or two parking spaces at any given time, and then when their client leaves, they have a new client coming in. Their parking demand is pretty low in comparison to a lot of our other downtown uses. A special parking plan would allow consideration of a new business, the type of redevelopment or business proposal to demonstrate we have a limited parking demand. We may not meet the, you know, the three per thousand or six per thousand for some of those uses, but we're in the downtown, and we can demonstrate that we can meet our parking needs.
Yeah, and I, I, I agree with the twenty percent reduction too, because, for example, I never park downtown, I walk, it's very walkable downtown. And then also, if you go to one business downtown, it's likely that you don't just go to one, you're going to multiple places, so that one parking spot is actually serving multiple businesses. So, I agree with the reduction. I don't know if anybody else has feedback on that, but I think that's a great idea. And then the on-street, on-street credits, I think, are a good point too, because when I park at a business, if I were to park downtown, I wouldn't go behind and park in the back where their off-street parking is, I'd always be parking on the street. So if they're not getting credit for that, that's a huge disadvantage, because they have to accommodate that all behind their building, or or anywhere else. I think that might be impossible for a lot of those buildings to be able to have different uses or change from their, their current use.
And the reduction makes a lot of sense too, when a, a lot of downtowns, you'll park, and you'll visit multiple businesses, so there's not a need for every business to meet every parking requirement. There's sharing already happening on the on-street parking.
Yeah.
Hopefully it facilitates some more development, if we can get it on Cleveland here, just knowing that the developer or the builder, whoever's renovating, doesn't have to. Parking's not going to be, basically, we're making it business-friendly, which is supposed to be a goal of ours. So, yeah, I'm with you, I like it.
And, and I can speak on, on personal experience from watching developments be killed from those onerous parking minimums. Uh, when I was working at, as a municipal planner in a, a rapidly growing suburban city in Dallas, and I, I watched numerous, numerous, you know, small-time developers just trying to open up a restaurant, or trying to open up a retail store, or a service, a service shop, and they're being cut, nixed, because they couldn't provide, you know, an absurd parking ratio, you know, you know, eight parking space, spaces for a thousand square feet. And so it's, it's really disheartening, you know, if I was a local developer, it's really disheartening, knowing that I couldn't do what I wanted to do, because I have to provide parking that's probably never going to be utilized.
An example of a project recently, that wasn't the only indication, but there was a restaurant that, where there's a development where they wanted to have a restaurant and rooftop seating, but they had to cut the square footage of the rooftop seating in order to meet the requirements for parking. There's other reasons too, but that's the one that hurt me so much, because I want to say a lot of rest of the name. So, but if, if they were so stringent, then we likely could move forward on projects like that, which brings so much value to community and get people out and loving our restaurants, so I think it would prevent situations like that. So I'm a fan of the changes personally.
Thank you for the feedback. I, I know we're, we're a little bit over the time that was allotted for discussion for the future ages, or the land use code tonight. So I want to be respectful of that time, and let everyone know that, that this is kind of the first presentation to the board of trustees and the planning commissioners in a lot of this, but it's not the last opportunity. As we mentioned before, we've got a series of meetings planned for presentations, collecting public comments and bringing that information back to the planning commission and the board of trustees. And I would like to remind everyone in attendance and, and on, online, that we do have a, an online comment form on the land use code project page on the website. That's the banner is nice and big on the homepage to take you right there, and you can leave your comments there, or email town staff with your feedback, and we'll compile that and bring it back. So please comment, we'd like to hear from you.
Okay. We're all wrapped up?
I have two pages of questions and concerns that we never even talked about.
You want to do them now?
I, I don't know, I thought, I, that's where, this little bit of my frustration is, we have work sessions, but we don't really get to, that's great, we've done a lot on a couple of topics, but there's a lot of stuff that hasn't been touched on.
We're going to have our own work session, aren't we? Trustees?
I don't know, what's, what's, what's the plan? Is that, is it going to be a work session where we can dive into all this stuff? Or not, because that's the concern if we're going to have.
For the trustee?
Is that going to be a work session where we can go over things at a high level, or is it actually going to be something where we can go into some of the concerns? That's my concern, because I thought that's what we're doing today.
I'd be open hearing this.
Yeah, we got to hear.
Well, if we're willing to put something off the agenda.
Yeah, that's the hard part. We have, we have, we have way too much on today's, for, this is a huge deal that we need to address.
Is that something, some of those things you can submit and get some of that?
I mean, I can submit them to staff, but the thing is, is that these are concerns, I think we as a board have to decide whether they're valid or not. I mean, I can submit them to staff, but the thing is, is that these are concerns, I think, we as a board have to decide whether they're valid or not. Because if the board feels that they're not valid concerns, then staff doesn't need to spend time on them. If the board agrees they're valid concerns, then yes, staff should work on them. Um I mean, I can send them my list of things, but again, that's kind of, I understand we have a huge meeting tonight. We have way too much stuff on the agenda.
Well, I'll send those concerns to everybody. Send them all to us. We can all read up and then when we, when we come back for a work session, we'll all be up on those concerns and then we can, you know, dive in on. Does that make sense?
Or I just want to make sure I should have a discussion about this. So this is my concern is that I send information to staff, but we as a board never sit down and talk about it.
We've been talking about this whole time now.
I understand. We've talked about the completion, which is great. I have two pages of concerns that we haven't touched on at all. That's my concern, is that I have things that we as a board have not had a chance to talk about and maybe others have concerns too. I don't know.
Right, right, right. And I I get that.
So yes, we've done great on the issues we did address, which was fantastic. I love it. The problem is, is there's a lot more there. I mean, we have a three hundred page document. There's a.
Yeah, sure.
We could certainly keep addressing this if there's more, you know, concerns of our trustees. We can take a look at the agenda, you know, later on tonight, if we're feeling like we need to push something, that's certainly something that we can do. And look at these other items and uh but we do want to be sure that there's plenty of time for engagement with the board. So. Um if the board wants to be flexible tonight, we can certainly adapt to that and and ensure that there's plenty of time for everyone to ask their question.
It's your meeting, Mary. It's your call. So.
I have a suggestion. I mean, this is a work session. I don't know what next week is besides a regular meeting. Does it make sense to have a work session prior to our regular meeting to go over the land use code?
I would be happy to do that.
Do that.
I'm happy to do that. If that works better for the board, I'm happy to bring my concerns.
Get it out. Because I know the the thing is, is you haven't had the opportunities to really, like we have. We've been working on this.
No, I understand. Yeah.
And I can see that you've got a lot thrown and you need to be, need to be heard by. I'm all for another meeting.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And there's a big dock in the bar.
Yeah, if the board is good with, you know, having early in next week, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, and then speak up, ask your questions.
Oh, yeah. I'm trying not to interrupt people, so I'm trying to do better or not.
We need to go through that due diligence on that. There's nothing wrong with that at all.
We're trying to use a quick alternative. We could always bump number four and five off the agenda. Um three is time sensitive and so is two for the agenda, but so we could keep going and talking about the land use code. And and if the board is willing, bump four and five to a work session next week. That is, we need to do that. My suggestion, because we also have the experts here to help answer. Questions or provide direct feedback. So I.
Do that?
You, but the rest of the board. Pushing some of those items.
You like that? Just bump two, we're gonna bump, we're gonna bump four and five.
Yeah.
All right. All right. So then we want to close this part of the meeting then and and we want to do those work sessions, get these items two and three out of the way or one.
Who are them?
Let them dive into one.
Dive into one.
Keep going.
Just keep going, Ron.
So the first thing that I had is something that I've noticed, and I guess this is a question, it's an overall. What I'm taking from reading this document is that it's increasing the level of restrictions we're putting as a rule on residents and on our businesses. One of the things that we explicitly put out in our comprehensive plan, which is on page twenty-seven, was that we wanted to make sure that we're protecting private property rights. Um so is it a whole, is this plan pushing through and reducing restrictions? Is it increasing restrictions? What is it doing? Because I I haven't read the old code line by line, but when I'm looking through the new one, I'm seeing hundreds of pages more than we had before. I've seen a lot of restrictions that I wasn't aware that we had, so it doesn't feel like we're reducing or we're kind of respecting, we're going into a lot of detail and telling them what they can and can't do with their property. So are we increasing, reducing restrictions? Because you guys know this better than I do.
Yeah, so high level, it's both, right? There's some some sections have, in our current code, have almost no clarity. And so a lot of what we've tried to do is provide clarity. Um that's based on development practices, what we've seen and heard through development proposals. Um we've added, it there's, we've added text, but it was for specific concerns that have been up in the past. Um there's other sections. Um I think that the the zone districts and the density and and the setbacks. Um we've added more, again, it there's more volume of of text there, but it has clarified the effect. It has reduced in some areas, some areas that we heard a lot of feedback on, um like sexually oriented businesses, there's more text. That there's, there's a lot of legalities that we've had to include to base or to to be defensible. If a if a certain type of land use is proposed, whereas currently there's no requirements.
Okay.
Now there are requirements to make sure that that business, if located in the town of Wellington, meets the community's desires instead of having nothing to say, to push back and be defensible. So it is, it's both. It's been a give and take. Um and I'll real quick, I want to go back to the the density. Um the the current code allows up to sixteen one units per acre in certain zone districts. And this proposal dials that down a little bit to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um so it it has been some give and take in various areas. And if you have any specific questions on on any particular, I might be happy to answer those here. Um or send me your questions and I can provide.
Okay. Another question I had is on page three. Oh, sorry.
Regarding your last question.
Next refers. Policy document, because right here in this land use code, which we're blocking to approve, which is an official policy document. Says that the comprehensive plan is the official policy document. So am I misunderstanding what a policy document is?
What can, which page number?
Sure, page number three, packet. That's a policy, not the planning commission, which that was not, the board of trustees was not the body that went through and did the comprehensive plan. So that's where the confusion is on my part. So maybe if we just do a change of wording, because to me. A policy, something that's binding, you must follow. It's not optional, which is not what I was told. I was told the comprehensive plan is a vision, it's where we're looking to go. But the land use code is the one that will actually be the binding one.
Trustee, I'd like to interject a little bit on resolution twenty-six twenty twenty-one. Um the board of trustees did vote and approved that resolution ratifying adoption of the Wellington Comprehensive Plan as the official policy of the town of Wellington. And so while it is a part, it is a, the document itself is adopted by the planning commission. It was presented to the planning, to the board of commission, board of trustees, um who adopted that resolution. So it has been.
Okay, so the board made it.
It isn't, the company's grant being adopted by the planning commission is the official policy of the town of Wellington, and that was ratified by the board. And with that resolution.
Okay, thank you. That was not clearly communicated at the time. Thank you for clarifying that now. Um section two uh zero four talks about additional fees that the town manager, town manager. determines additional funds are needed to complete application review. Um just a concern I have with that, it seems open-ended that someone can start down an application process and then the fees can just be changed on them without. Quiet. And I don't have the page number in the packet. It's section two four oh four B. Um but I just wondered if you could clarify on that, what does that look like in terms of additional fees? Because if someone's already starting down the application process, they put hours of stuff into this and all of a sudden we're saying, oh, by the way, you're gonna have to pay these extra fees you weren't expecting. Um it's kind of hard for them to say, well, hold on a second. I didn't budget for these fees. So maybe you could clarify what type of fees we'd potentially be looking at on that.
So this, this is a great question, and I think it's a simple answer. When we do a development review. If there are specific requirements relative to that review that are outside the town staff's area of expertise, like water rights. If we need to hire legal counsel for a water rights review, if it's a specialized engineering type of analysis, that's not a general civil engineering. Um that review requirement is the cost that is borne by the developer. They sign a contract when they submit their application that says that they're responsible for any third-party review fees that the town has to obtain. And that D five form is a, D five is an an old, older name, a title for that document, but that's been a practice of the towns for decades. Um and so it's it's simply an acknowledgement that if there are additional expenses incurred by the town in fulfillment of their application, they're responsible for repayment of those.
Okay, so that's something, they sign a contract, they are aware that they might incur these fees upfront.
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, that then answers it. Thank you very much. Um page nine, oh boy, I didn't realize that mine was going through this. I think it's page nine of that first one. Let me double check. But it talks about inaction, where if the planning direct, planning department does not take action on something, then something is automatically um denied. I think it's on. Page twenty-two. Uh it's the effective inaction. If planning director or designated fails to take action on application within the specified timeframe of thirty days, such inaction shall be deemed. As a denial of the application.
Page twenty-one.
Page twenty-one, okay. Sorry, I didn't realize it had different page numbers through the different portions, so I didn't.
Yeah, sorry for for that confusion.
Yep.
And I think the, and you have a different version opening aside from the packet.
I'm elected to packet.
Okay, yeah. So I think what as a uh trustee can instance of this packet page twenty-one, is that where you're looking?
I think so. I'm looking right now. Yeah.
Um what was the section?
Uh point four. Number five or letter I.
Okay.
Yeah.
So while I'm looking for it in in, oh, at the very top of the page.
Yeah.
Um.
Yes.
So that's under, under the the higher up category of post-decision actions. So this would be. Um something such as a site plan has been approved by the planning commission. And the town staff has a uh some margin to work with. It's defined as ten percent of a of a measurable standard. Um if a tree species isn't available or uh something had to be moved twenty feet or something like that. If the applicant is proposing, this is what we would like to do, and if we aren't able to address that within that timeframe or can't reach an agreement. The application is denied. It brings finality to that process. If the, it's it's a, it's a legal mechanism, right? It just defines that there is an endpoint, that the negotiation can't go on forever. And then they can submit or they can reapply for a different option or the same option and restart that process. But it's it's a means of cutting off. That that some decision has to be made and it puts a timeframe to it so that developers understand when they submit something, they will get a reasonable response within that timeframe. Or they they know the outcome at that point.
The, and I guess I don't know what the timeframe process normally is. Is that thirty days from the time that it's approved by, like, let's say the planning commission approves it. They then have thirty days to work through that with the plant, with the, with the staff, or is that thirty days from the time they submit the application until we're done? Where does that thirty days begin?
It it depends on the type of approval process, but and and so just the 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 larger section that you're referencing has cases for for each.
Right.
Land use type or application type, and I believe each of them has some standard there for.
Right, yeah. Places, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's a means of uh creating some uniformity in the process. That there, that there is a timeline, that there is a deadline, so that things don't languish and linger forever.
Sure.
Um and at that point, the current approach was that the, you know, a lack of decision results in denial of the request. As opposed to approval. If there's good reason why the proposal is being considered or why it's taking so long to evaluate the outcome of that. If it's automatically approved, it may not be desirable for the community to have that land use type, or there may be very good reason why it wasn't automatically approved. And so it defaults to a denial, and then they can restart with a new application uh or reapplication at that time.
Okay, so when would that thirty days begin? So let's just say site plan reviews, we'll go with that one. We'll say site plan review. I believe the planning commission has to approve that. So when does it for that thirty day period? It might be different than thirty, but just call it thirty days, whatever it is. But that, when does that period begin? Does that begin when they submit the application for the site plan review? Does that begin upon the planning commission's approval of that site plan review? Where where does that thirty days start?
Well, if the 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 timeline is usually tied to an administrative review, items that go to the planning, if it's to the planning commission. Um the planning commission may table it. They may table it a couple of times. They may table it for one meeting, they may table it for three.
Okay.
So that's at the discretion of the decision-making board there.
Okay.
Administrative approvals are the ones that have a timeline on.
Okay, so the administrative ones, okay. So call it an administrative, when does that begin for the timeline?
From a complete application.
Okay, so they have thirty days. What is your typical process of going through something where they have things that need to be changed, but they're working with you in good faith? What's the typical timeline that that takes to get accomplished?
It depends on the proposal and the the case. You're asking for a very specific timeline.
Here's my concern, is you guys are slumped in your office and it's taking you two months to get through stuff. We have stuff automatically getting denied because you guys were just too busy with other things. That's not okay. So my question is, is does thirty days give us enough time that you and your staff are gonna be able to get through that? And we're not gonna have people's applications being denied for no reason other than we're just too busy to deal with it. Has that ever happened?
I, we've not automatically denied it, and I think it's a really great question because it definitely brings something to light. And and what I would propose is that uh. We can take a look, if the language is written too strictly on that, again, it was provided as a means of ensuring a process that's clear. And and the expectations can be clearly identified by a developer for what their turnaround times might look like. But if that's overly restrictive, we can change that. I would tell you, current practice where this is not defined at all, it's usually, it's communication's key. If if someone's working on a an application, we will communicate to them, you know, hey, this needs to go to, you know, for legal review. Or our engineers are evaluating that uh request, or gosh, you know, I I just had to leave town for a family funeral. I'll get back to it. And and get your response. It's usually just communicated. This is when you can expect.
Sure.
To get an answer from us.
Yeah, and and that's fine. It's the concern I have is this is, it's very clear. It says shall be, that that it is. So if for whatever reason, whether we're communicating with them or not at thirty days, your application is now, that's my concern. And is it, do we current, we don't currently have anything like this right now. Is that correct? There's no automatic denial in our code existing. So this would be, okay. So that's my concern is just, if we're gonna say thirty days, do we change the wording to not make it shall, but that it can be? So if they're not, because I get, if they're not communicating with you, okay, thirty days, I'm sorry, it's denied. You haven't given us what we need. That's fine. Uh but I don't want it to be something that just automatically goes in and you're kicked out because, well, it took longer than it normally would take, so you're out of luck. Start over.
Yeah, I, we'll we'll take a closer look at it and see if if we can propose some options. One, one available option might be to include some language that has a, a clear cutoff, shall be thirty days or sixty days. And then add unless otherwise agreed to in writing.
That would be perfect, because then, again, if you guys are communicating, great, it's in writing, we're all good.
Okay, we'll, thank you. That's a great comment. We'll we'll take a look at it and we'll also vet that for for legalities on what what, making sure that the language is defensive too.
Yeah, thank you. Um and then section two dash four oh nine, I think it's just a little bit further down. I'll get page, sorry. Uh the planning director, and it says uh section C, so this is on page twenty-two. Uh decisions made by the planning director designate or appealable to the planning commission, um C section twenty-two dash twenty-two. My understanding, because we were just talking about this last week, is that that is supposed to be the board of adjustments is the one that's appealed to. So is that just the wrong board is on there? Yeah.
I I believe that's, thank you. We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that and make sure it's updated.
Um, all right, so page eighty-seven, this is where I figured out they use dot pages on that. Um this is the proposed uses, and this is probably something you guys already have. Um can we make sure that the um uses or the zones are in the top of every page?
Yes.
Because you only have it on the top and then there's. And then you're like, wait, what's this? An R one, R two, R four? Uh so just if we can make sure that the table headers are at the top of every page, so that it's easier to read.
Absolutely.
Um and then is there a reason that single family, and I think this was brought up by the planning commission, single-family homes aren't allowed in the. Downtown core, I believe, so kind of that. downtown core, I believe, so kind of you have a bunch of homes on the, not on Cleveland, but to the north and the south. But that's single-family home is not allowed to use, as I understand, in that zone, is there a reason behind that?
Yeah, there is, and so the, keep it in mind that the, the current code and the current zoning maps have the downtown core, which is the current C two zone district, is only the, 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 the properties fronting Cleveland Avenue.
Right.
And that change was specifically made a couple of four, five, six years ago. The town specifically took action to eliminate residential uses from a permitted use on the Cleveland Avenue corridor. So this did come up at the planning commission meeting, and it was suggested that we take a look at an option that would allow single-family homes in the downtown core. We're continuing to vet some options on that, and it obviously could have some other ripple effects that need to be looked at throughout other sections of the code. And as, as we're continuing to evaluate some options there, one of the options that we, we have talked about as a, as a staff is what we're doing right now is creating the legislative document that are the, the rules for those zone districts. If the intent, which, and I couldn't quote you the page number right now, but the intent of that C two zone district is defined as to what it was intended for.
Okay.
And it's generally paraphrasing, not having the language right in front of me, was intended for retail establishments, entertainment, restaurants and dining in that downtown context. The, the question is, is if that is the intent of that zone district, do we wanna be allowing single-family homes?
Okay.
And so, and, and that's just a, that's just a question on what's right for that zone district. The next step after the land use code, once we have all the, the code provisions in place for these various districts, then the town will turn around and update our official zoning map to make sure that we've, you know, the transitional zone won't exist anymore, so we've got some housekeeping there. We can evaluate, are there other properties that make more sense in a different zone district? When we update the official zoning map, the decision can be made by the board and trustees with recommendations from the planning commission to simply, we don't wanna zone the properties along Harrison and McKinley C two right now, doesn't make sense. The C two zone district could say no single-family homes, and we just don't zone those properties C two.
Okay.
And then that would allow those McKinley and Harrison avenues, which have been the, have the, the source of, of some of these questions. They could come and request that C two zoning as a property owner and say, I would like this to be considered, and it would trigger a public hearing.
Okay.
So that's a, just a different way to approach the same problem, you, if you define the zoning code based on what is desired, and then zone those properties accordingly and allow new properties to be brought in if the public hearing takes place, and if that's the right decision at the time.
Okay, yeah, so I, I would appreciate getting clarity on that, because the concern I have is that the comprehensive plan, which I understand is different than the zoning map, but as I'm told, that is now, that is the official policy document of the town board, based on what the board trustees did, specifically defines that downtown core area as McKinley and Harrison, which there are homes in there. And based on what I heard at the planning commission, for example, if that were to be changed and implemented, I, I think zoning would have to change for that, but if someone's home were to burn down, they wouldn't be allowed to rebuild it, if we pass it as it is today, because it's not an approved use. And that's a huge concern, because while there might be people that would love to build a business, and they should be allowed to, there are also probably a lot of residents who love their home and would love to have a home again, so I think we definitely need to make sure that we are able to do that. Um. I also know is we have group hubs in residential three, was there a specific reason that we put group hubs in the residential zoning instead of a commercial, or added a residential zoning over commercial? Our three is, I don't remember which one that is. It's a cut medium density, I think.
Is it medium density or mixed use, I'm, I'm trying to find.
It is. Is it R four?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, if, this is where I'm getting dealt with these.
Yeah.
I can't tell which ones which, okay, yes, so it's a conditional one, R four, which is that the mixed use, or is that the medium density? I don't know which one.
Downtown.
Downtown, okay.
That's why it's conditional, to allow that use for potentially a Harrison McKinley transition, maybe.
But Harrison McKinley are currently in there as downtown core.
There's a lot going around on that, I will tell you. This is under some serious, okay, it's being looked at, it's something to be, we, we spent probably half of our last work session.
Okay, great, great.
And then the important part here is the map hasn't been adopted.
I understand.
Know where those are yet.
I understand the map has not been adopted, but we do have a future land use map, which is official policy that has been adopted, it's not zoning, it is official policy currently.
Right, and just to clarify, in the future land use map, it's identifying what an area could be within the, the twenty to forty year horizon, and there's no times to place when it has to happen.
Absolutely.
So something I kind of think of when I, I think about, is so, let's say someone was in the downtown neighborhood on Harrison, and it wasn't zoned, it's downtown core. But they did make the request to be considered for zoning change, since that, you know, kind of matches the vision of what the comprehensive plan said, that might be, they might consider it, because it was something that could potentially happen in the future. If it was something, we'd say absolutely not in the future, and they came with some crazy request, like they wanted highway commercial in the middle of downtown. They'd say, hey, that doesn't really match a comprehensive plan, so that's not something we would suggest or listen to. But if it was something that matches a comprehensive plan, then we would consider pursuing. I hope that helps.
No, that's good, thank you. And then I know some catering is limited to just a couple of spots, is there a specific reason why catering is not allowed? I think it's permitted in light industrial and C three, but nowhere else in commercial, was there a specific reason behind that?
The, so, and this is food catering, not like restaurants.
Catering, yes, yeah, food catering.
Yep, and so food catering has a different definition than like other restaurants. But the, the general practice, you know, they're producing quite a large quantities of food and then distributing it, there, it's a different use than the C one, which is neighborhood commercial, the impacts would be more than you would expect next to someone's residential zone district.
Okay.
C two, there's building size, lot size, and parking and loading, and loading issues in terms of what would be reasonable to accommodate that type of use. And then lastly, industrial is for manufacturing, it just doesn't really fit, so that.
That makes sense.
It's not intended to be restrictive, but it's more of a.
Perfect, that, that, that answers that question, thank you. Uh, farmers markets are not allowed in public spaces, I know typically we do those in a lot of parks and things like that, which I don't know if those would fall under public spaces or not, what was kind of the thought process on that?
That's an easy one to add, and I, I've seen that from time to time. One of the things that we didn't wanna do was create a situation where create a use by right on town-owned property, it's still, it needs to go through a town approval process.
Sure.
For use of town property, but we can certainly list it as a permitted use with conditions, we can, we'll look at some other options, is that a desire?
I think that would be. Yeah, I, I agree with that, there being a process, because we don't want them to just show up on our parks, but yeah, I think that there should be a process, so they could, because I I know our farmers market we had last year was huge, people love that.
Is it currently managed under an advanced application? That's my understanding.
I don't know, I, I don't know how they work.
Yeah. Yeah, Reese, we, we can hear you, this is Reese Wilson.
Yeah, so, something that's pretty typical with these types of, you know, farmers markets is, you can use it, you can, um, as far as the temporary use. And in our, in our draft regulations, we have a section for accessory uses, the temporary uses. And this could be a really quick and easy fix, if you just wanna include it in the temporary uses, and it has its own sort of standards and instructions on, you know, how long it's gonna be there, when it's gonna be there, where it's gonna be. So that's something that's very common in modern codes, and it's something that might be who, this particular type of use, you know, if it's something that's always on city-owned property or at a public space, that's something that could be favorable for the town.
No, that'd be great, I think that sounds good, because I don't know of any long-term farmers markets that would potentially be here, so, awesome.
Yeah, no, good comments, thanks Reese, thanks Justin.
Um. Childcare centers are not, are limited in residential, now is that separate from like the smaller scale in-home childcare? Is that why that's the case, or I was, I was a little confused on that one? As to that being restricted, I think it was a conditional use.
And it, there is a distinction between childcare centers, which is more of commercial in nature versus in, in-home daycare, and, and in-home daycare, I think is gonna be under, is it under home occupations, or do we have it under its own designation? Trying to find the right page here. And that, and that's been a, an issue that has come up a couple of times in, in examples in the town was our, our current code is overly restrictive on in-home daycares and requires a pretty orderous process. And what we tried to do was simplify that and, and allow it to be more like a home occupation than some of the other standards that would normally apply. And the childcare center is specifically more commercial center in nature.
Mr. Bird, I believe, there wasn't, there's some legislation that was passed a year ago relative to in-home daycares, that the local code can't be more restrictive than what the state requirement is, and that, and that, let me be clear, that's in-home daycare is not childcare centers, correct?
That is correct, and, and I, we will, because I can't find the, I don't know, but it's, I, I, yeah, I believe that that's correct, but I haven't been able to locate it exactly, but I believe that what the approach that we've taken in this draft, and we'll verify for sure, is that we've just left it as a home occupation.
Yeah.
Because it's true the same way as a resident, just as trustee McDonald pointed out. And we are, that's one of the topics that we're going back over that Colorado Senate bill that passed that legislation to make sure that we haven't gotten crosswise with the state statutes. We're still seeing.
Add on that additionally, our, we do house three lawyers. Mark White is helping us with this project, he's my direct superior. He will come through that to make sure everything applies. We understand staff has expressed some comments about the child care centers, the, the daycares, all that. But that's one thing Mark White and our team will be looking at a little bit more intensively as we continue to go through this revisionary process.
Thanks, Reese, it's on page ninety-one, as far as in home occupations is permitted in all the residential zones. And then the table uses, it was just down under accessory uses, that's why I wasn't finding it in the list.
And then the final one I had on this chart here was that, is there a reason that religious land uses are conditional in C one and not permitted at all in C two, yet we do have other gathering places such as bars, taverns, art studios that are all permitted in that zone? My understanding was that we needed to be consistent, they were allowing any type of gatherings that we need to have that available for religious land use.
Yeah, so, and this, this one also spurred some conversation at the planning commission, so we're, we're gonna go back through and take a closer look at it to make sure we've got consistent recommendations, but in general, this is based off of some Supreme Court cases that provided guidance on, on how to address religious land uses. And the general feeling is, or the general consensus on the, the, from the court cases, is that you need to treat religious land uses the same way you would other assembly uses. And so, you know, theaters, personal centers, things of that nature, we, we have a section that's identified as assembly uses, and those are all consistent, or mostly consistent in that category, except for some with some conditions for specific reasons. Parking size are the factors. But there, there's also a kind of a reasonableness approach that we look at when we draft these lenses. Some of our zone districts, the minimum lot sizes are not adequate to support the off-street parking landscape, the open space, for more intention for a large facility, that would accommodate an assembly use. So that's not to be construed with like in-home worship or something of that nature. So there are some nuances there that we've taken a look at, and we're gonna continue to comb through and make sure that the recommendations are consistent throughout this document.
Okay. And then page one oh one of the packets, this is talking about home occupations. And I believe it specifically says that home occupations are required to be permitted. Is that something that is existing in the code today, that someone has to get a permit for the town before they can work out of their home with their own vehicles?
Yes, that's a current requirement, and it's, it's, the business license has a checkbox for home occupation. It's all the same form, but it's been required for quite a few years.
Okay, and is that permit just them having a business license count as permitted, or is there another process they have to go through? Also, just getting, obtaining a business license?
Most instances, it's just a business license, and there are some factors that could be evaluated. The state allows some commercial kitchen facilities in a residential construction. They might trigger a different permit process for the specifics of that use, but those are, if, if there is an additional step needed, those are identified with the business license.
Okay, that is, as long as they do their business license, that is the permitting process, they're not going for a separate thing, unless they have like a special use. They're not going to the planning, they're not going, all that, if they're just literally starting an accounting company, other, they go to the town, get their license, and that's their permitting.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And then on the lighting plan, that's chapter five at the beginning there, what has changed in that from what we currently have? In general, I understand there's a lot, but from what we had before, is there, there were a lot of things that seemed to be very restrictive in terms of telling people when they can have lights or not have lights in their homes, or outdoor, not inside their homes. That was a little concerning. So is this, is this one of those areas that has become more restrictive or less restrictive, or has stayed the same?
The, i- it's not necessarily more restrictive, most of the standards that are in this were either already in the current code or industry best practices. The current code is, just doesn't have a whole lot of context to it. There are some provisions for dark sky, you know, downward castlighting, full cutoffs, that's to prevent light from passing across a property line, impacting a road right of way, or or adjacent properties. A lot of those things are, are things that we've discussed many times with the planning commission during a site plan review process. This just makes sure that they're identified clearly in the code. Were there any other specific provisions that were included in the updates that you recall, Reese?
No, the, you pretty much summed it up, the, the goal was to look at the region, see what works, because the existing lighting regulations are relatively sparse, and kind of really, like you said, they're out of context, it just didn't make any sense, because there really wasn't a lot of information behind it, and so this was an intent to kind of clarify and beef it up a little bit, so someone can understand what's going on with exterior lighting. And this is something that's not, you know, outside of the scope of what happens on the Front Range or within Colorado, so this is the kind of mostly stem from.
Yeah, and, and just, as I've kind of alluded to, but I mean, most of these are industry best practices, it, it's and some, sometimes we write it as a regulation, but it's what the industry is already doing. And so most of the lighting plans that we get, even if our requirements allow something different, most of them go, no, we don't do that, or we can't even make that luminaire.
Okay.
So the, these are very much consistent with, with practices that are, that we see on all of our applications.
The next thing I had is on fences, one of the things specifically on the fences is it specifically calls out that fences need to be close to buildings. Was there a specific reason for adding that requirement into the fencing code? Just speaking from someone who has children and people that have pets, typically you want your fence not close to them, so you have a fenced area that your kids and pets can run around in. Versus having that close to the house, not having much fenced area, was there a reason behind putting that there? I'm trying to find a specific line.
You know, it's, it's possible something's out of context, just based on what you're describing, but if you, and I'm looking through the fence.
Fences five three oh one, C encourage privacy fences located close to residences or other primary buildings on a property, and not alongside in rear property lines.
Okay, so, thank you for, for finding the, the bullet point. The current code did something similar to that, and the intent is that, that there's not six-foot-tall solid privacy fences on like corner, corner lots, front yards, side yards that are, you know, like in a high-traffic area. The general intent and most, most fence codes throughout have kind of a preference for split rail picket, lower fence heights, things of that nature. If that's not the desire, we can certainly make modifications to that. Split rail picket, lower fence heights, things of that nature. If that's not the desire, um, we can certainly make modifications to that, that specific section.
Okay, cuz I know there were other sections where it did call out like the types of fences you can have in your front and your side yards, which are the not solid. And the privacy fences would just be more from the kind of the dwelling and back, which makes sense. But what I'm, and maybe it's just what I'm reading from that, but it. Privacy events, which is talking about that solid fence, that's not talking about a picket fence and it's specifically saying needs to be close to the residence, not near the property line. We're typically. What you would see is your fences on the property line, right? It's the dividing line between your property and your neighbor's property, but this appears from what I'm reading. To say, we don't really actually want that. We want your privacy fence up near your house, which again kind of defeats the purpose cuz then I can't use the rest of my yard or. I, I don't know what the purpose of that line there. I understand the other pieces of different fencing on the fronts and sides, but this one here doesn't really make sense. With that.
Yeah, and, and some of that language is kinda carryover from the, the current code, but I'm hearing um maybe some head nods. Is that something that we wanna take a look at changing? Since phrase is encouraged anyhow.
I appreciate the encouragement. Thank you. I did notice that.
I know that that piece is in the current code, but just again, when you're looking at it from a fundamental. Code standpoint. Writing a code that says we encourage something isn't really very clear.
Sure.
It's. Should be clearer than this is currently written, so we'll, we'll take a look at that and see if we can add some clarity.
And then on page one twenty-seven, what defines dangerous fence cuz it's specific and again, maybe this is an existing code already. Again, I don't know, but it talks about uh item F maintenance dilapidated on slightly or dangerous fences. Shall be removed or repaired when removal is ordered by code enforcement is, I don't know if that's currently in the code now and what defines. It'd probably be good to have some definition on that, so we're not just having code enforcement. Only got a half of a broken board there. We're gonna force you to take down your fence.
So I. Uh, just for perp tissue, even for a definition on the word dangerous.
Yeah, also like what are we, what is defining when we're sending code enforcement to your house to tell you you have to repair or replace your fence? Uh, that's a little open to interpretation what we have there right now. One of the questions is if it's already in our code, okay. Can, I don't know if we can. Can we more clearly clarify what defines the things that are, so people know this is what. You're gonna expect.
Yeah, and so unless you had a comment, I can address the question. Um, so generally speaking, terms like dangerous are not defined explicitly because. Uh, many enforcement items are the discretion of the enforcement officer because they have to interpret and apply the understanding of what is happening there. So we don't define, you know, your fence is missing three screws and then we have four screws. It's, it's intended to, a dangerous fence may be a fence that's leaning across a sidewalk. And creating a barrier or it has fallen down completely or your fence has, has a gap in it that your dog continues to get out and is creating other problems. There's, there's a myriad, a myriad of, of situations that could come up. That's up to the enforcement officer to identify. What is the reasonable minimum standard to meet the intent of the code, which is safe fences?
Thank you. Um, in landscape code on page one thirty. Um, we're specifically telling people that they are required to have. Not allowed to have. And it's item C at the very top of the page, landscape shall consist of a variety of species to enhance biodiversity. Not one species may take up more than twenty-five percent. Of total non-grass plant areas on one site. Why are we telling people what kind of plants and how many plants they can or can't have? Is that something that's in our code today or is it something we're adding? Why are we telling people they can or can't plant on their own property?
And keep in mind, this is for new developments. This is, this would not be applicable to.
I, I understand, but still the new developed, new person coming in, putting a yard together. Why are we telling them that you have to have? If they wanna have all, it's their property.
Most HOA standards will not allow hundred percent of any species. So the fifty percent is kind of an HOA standard. If you were to build this home and sage homes and submit a land state plan and it had one hundred percent. Purple roses, they would deny you. It's, it's a landscapes, it's a commonly accepted HOA standard. It's, and it's just for, it's basically aesthetics. It's so that if that one species gets, gets diseased, it protects you against a, basically a landscape, you're gonna have to go back and completely replace every time something happens to the one species you pick. So it's a little bit of a safeguard, but it is a lot of aesthetics as well.
Yeah, and, and that's good context, uh commissioner starter. I would throw out there too, the, the case example that's really relevant is. Ash trees have been a staple and gold standard for street trees in communities for a long, long time and we've got the Emerald Ash Forest, which is creating. Great havoc into communities and it's reached Colorado. That is an issue for Colorado now. And so if, when, when you have a single biodiversity, a single plant species for a large application and that something happens to that species and you lose all of them, we've lost your entire tree canopy. There are certain species of rosebushes that are highly susceptible to that same thing. They're very attractive rosebushes and people love them. But when you get that blighted disease affecting those roses, they're gone. And then you have no landscaping in those areas, so it's a safeguard against losing an entire culture or species of, of plants as well as some of these set of qualities that benefit from having.
So I can understand HOAs. They put their rules in place. People choose to live in HOA because they either like or don't like the rules they have there. There's a difference between when in HOA that you can choose to either live there or not, has that in place versus. We as a town are now regulating that, so I do have a concern with that. I understand it makes sense, but that is a little bit concerning to me.
Okay, thanks for the, for the comments and we'll take a look.
And then plants required to grow in licensed nur- nurseries. There's a bunch of requirements there about measurements and ballings. I think it's later on that same page. Why are we getting into all of that? Is that something that is already in our code currently? We're telling them you must get your plants from this type of a facility or is this a new thing that we're adding?
Jen, do you wanna tackle that?
Yeah, that is really geared more towards commercial landscapes. So when you're installing a, you know, like a, a common area in an HOA or a commercial landscape. To make sure all the plant material, it, it is very standard language, but I can see where you're coming from if, if you're looking at this from a perspective of. Um, a homeowner putting in a landscape, it's not applicable to that, so maybe we need to make that more clear.
Yeah, if we can clarify that specifically cuz that, that's concerning like. Cuz me as a homeowner, I might have a friend who has a nursery and I'm like, I'm gonna go to my friend or I'm gonna go here. I'm not gonna go to all that. So if we can get clarity on that, that would be great.
Well, you also have to realize a lot of commercial nurseries are actually open to the public. Yeah, they, they only, they only serve the industry. This is back, back east, it's that way.
Okay.
It is here too. I would say ninety-nine percent of the plants you would be able to obtain as a homeowner would be grown at a commercially licensed nursery.
And they might be, I just, as a homeowner, might not know that, right? And then I'm like. So.
And, and I would also point out that, that that is for any required landscaping. But if I'm a homeowner and planting my own yard, that's not required landscaping. If I wanna, if I wanna grow an, uh, an acorn or if I wanna grow an oak tree from acorn, I can do that in my own yard.
Okay.
And so there's.
Okay.
There's not a prohibition against landscaping that's not required to be installed per this code.
Okay. Got it, okay.
Since we're on this page. We got a lot of existing conditions around. They're safe, right? I mean, with the, you're not gonna expect people to change that right now, right?
No, the, so anything that's adapted is part of the land use code does not affect existing.
All you know.
Yep, yep.
Uh, and then I think it's farther down. This is one of the things that was just something I have as concern on the irrigation and maybe this is what everyone's already doing. Uh, but that it has to be irrigated with um efficient auto mandated underground irrigation system. Those are not expensive. I know one of the things we're dealing with right now is a lot of issues around affordable housing when we start requiring irrigation systems to go in. Versus letting a homeowner make a decision with a builder as whether they want one or not when they buy the house. Um, that is a concern. Uh, it just, I mean, it, it's guaranteeing and driving up the price of homes when we're already trying to figure out what are ways that we can. Keep that down. Is there? Is there a reason that that is put in there versus giving people the option to decide either they do want it or they don't want it when they're talking to their developer?
So let's, let's make sure that we're talking the same context. Again, these, these standards are proposed for any new landscape that's required landscaping. So if we're requiring trees and shrubs, the requirement is that you have an adequate water supply to keep them alive. So we don't want people to put in a landscape and then die because they didn't water it and then thus send letters saying your landscaping has died, you're required to replace it. Um, so it's ensuring adequate water supply to keep the required landscaping alive. And it would not be a requirement for a homeowner to put in a residential sprinkler system if they choose not to. So HOA may require that. Um, but it's not listed as a town requirement for a, an individual homeowner to install an irrigation system. I think that there is a, is value to having language in the code and we, and we can tweak this if there's a desire to, but if. Having language that if a resident or homeowner chooses to install. An irrigation system, it should have minimum specifications for automatic watering, automatic shut offs for water conservation purposes. And we can tailor this as, as we need to, to, to meet the concerns, but just for clarity for. New landscapes for, for commercial and multifamily arranging group settings, not for individual homeowners. And it's to keep the required landscaping alive.
Well, new, new landscaping would also be um watered with non-treated water, non-potable, right? As one of our. Requirements for new development, you could have, they have to bring in non-potable for irrigating, right? So.
It's.
It does say, it says that right underneath that trustee McDonald, the next item down says use of non-treated, non-potable water for irrigation is required if a permanent suitable option is available. So yes, that's literally the next item underneath that. Is that it has to use non-pot if it's available.
Well, that would make sense then to put that mechanism in place to ensure that if they are using treated water, that there are shut offs, you know, in place to try and.
Even your potable water needs to be concerned.
Well, yes.
It should be on it.
Thank you, trustee commission for. Reiterating what a non-renewable resource that is.
So, so yeah, I think I just would appreciate the clarification because what it reads, this is all landscaping shall be irrigated with this things is it. Doesn't call out, well, this is the required things. It, to me, that's all landscaping. So if a new homeowner, if I was a builder and building a home for a homeowner. I'm telling them you have to have an underground sprinkler system for these plants. And so if that's not the case. Uh, if we can just maybe bring some clarity to that.
Yeah, uh, we'll take a closer look at it and make sure that they were captured it accurately. Um, one thing to keep in mind, just as a general rule in these, in these uh codes and regulations. When you get down into, we're, you know, in the, you know, page hundred and thirty or so. Um, when it says all is referring to the prior heading, that all things required under this section are required to follow these rules, not all generally, everything in town. So it's a matter of applying the code to the set of circumstances.
Is that talking about the five, four, three, which is plant material specifications or is that talking about five, four, which is general, cuz five, four is general. Design principles. Or landscaping screening. It doesn't call out residential, commercial, industrial. It just says landscaping. And then that specific section is plant material specifications. It doesn't say whether it's for commercial, for residential, for industrial. It just says plant materials.
And then it goes new development.
Not for that section.
It does in the general visions.
Yes, yeah, it says new development.
The thing that'll help this section the most is just having a section at the very beginning that says, it's an applicability section.
I was just gonna say the same thing.
Okay.
Okay. Be clarified on what it applies to. So I, I think we have some applicability sections.
You do, yep, there are several.
Might be at the top of, of chapter five. But we can always throw in one here and I think that will address uh the concerns of what you're being spoke of right now.
Yeah, great point. Thanks, Reese. And then we'll take a close look too and make sure that we're insistent throughout.
All right, and then on one thirty-seven. I just would like some clarification. So it's a standard lot detached and attached, single-family residential development landscaping standard or landscape standards. On item number C two, it says there shall be a minimum of seventy-five percent live materials between the front of the single-family resident curb excluding paved driveway areas. What does that? What is defined this live material? Is that saying they have to have grass? Cuz that also when we're talking about water conservation and trying to get people to go with zero escaping or rock and stuff like that, well, that to me, what this reads as. Well, you can have twenty-five percent like rock or non, something needs to be watered, but the other seventy-five percent has to be some kind of live material. So what exactly is that getting at at that piece there?
Yeah, so I'll take it, I'll respond generally.
Okay.
And then, and Jen is a, as a landscape architect. So she can provide some additional context. Um, but the general statement is live materials. I mean, we don't wanna see an entire landscape. Um, that's just paved over or um, you know, all dirt or all rock or all single type of material. So there, there's. An element here that it needs to be an attractive landscape to, to promote property values and your HOAs are gonna have similar or more stringent requirements. Um, the other component here. Is, you know, what is living material? Grass is the most common because it's, it's, it's prolific grower in most environments, but live materials may also be a mulched area with. Clumped bushes or, or categories. It doesn't have to be a hundred percent coverage of that seventy-five percent area. Um, but you need to have enough la- with enough living landscape materials in that seventy-five percent area to maintain that, that biodiversity and biome attractiveness for the site. In the lens of our uh landscape, landscape code updates and irrigation standards for water conservation. Um, we put out a preference survey to the community that identified that the most desired landscape for the community was one that included. Native species, uh, live species. Um, but not necessarily turf grasses or even native buffalo grass. It was a lot of. They liked the, the color in the top of the sages, the black-eyed Susans, the native. Uh, flowers that provide color and some, some scale to those landscapes. And so we definitely had that in mind. We were crafting these as the community. Told us through that survey that they wanted to see more of these living landscapes with native species and some variety. Jen, was there anything else from a high level?
No, that, that hit the nail on the head and we have had this question before and I, I wonder sometimes if the graphic would help because you're thinking of it kind of in plan view. If you have a five-foot shrub, you're thinking of like the, that space that that five-foot shrub takes up. That's that seventy-five percent, so. Uh, that's what adds up to the seventy-five percent. So if you, if you're looking at a, you know, a planned view and you had a bunch of five-foot shrubs or perennials or whatever, that, 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 that coverage is seventy-five percent, so. Cody's absolutely right. It's meant to be flexible. It can be, you know, plant material or grass, but, but I wonder if a graphic.
A graphic would be good because just when I read that and we're talking about water conservation, we need to use less water and like here, but you are required to have, right? When I think seventy-five percent, like, I mean, seventy-five percent of my front's gotta be grass. And you want me to, did you want me to use less water? So I think a graphic would be great, just clarifying what exactly we're looking at that.
And then take a look cuz I, I think that there are some of those graphics in the design manual, but maybe we can pull one of those relevant examples from the code.
Those would be like us mature size.
Okay. Um, and then on the sign code, you've mentioned earlier that one of the big changes was to bring our sign code into compliance with First Amendment laws. Was our sign code out of compliance with First Amendment laws previously?
Extremely.
Okay. Uh, and then has our sign code become more or less restrictive in terms of what we're allowing people to do with signs in town?
It's, it's a combination of both, but generally less restrictive.
Okay. Thank you. Those are the ones I have. I'm sure we'll have more as I continue going through it, but I can be more specific. Thank you for letting me go through those questions. Well, I'll send them to Kelly or Patty and then have.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So that when we come to the next portion. We'll, 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 we'll have some opinions too.
No, that's good. And I appreciate, this is what is asked cuz you guys brought some great feedback to my thoughts. I really appreciate time to do this.
Thank you.
You brought up some great points about fencing and landscaping.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Thank you all for the feedback. Um, just to reiterate, we'll be bringing these back. We'll be tracking all the comments and. Um, the feedback that we get and we'll present all that in the upcoming meetings.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Good job, Cody. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you to our, our, our team as well.
Yeah, we can take five minutes.
Five minutes? Okay.
Oh, break.
Well, I knew that I'm getting it. Well, I had it, it was because of.
One, item two. Waste water treatment.
We got a lot of tips, a lot of shares with you. We got like five or six.
There you go. Yeah, yeah, let's go. Hello, everybody. I'm Jay Meyer. Nice to see everybody again.
It's nice to see you too.
So here we are, finally, we've been working on this the last two, three years. Uh, we finally have a cost for our waste water treatment plant expansion. Uh, Crystal is hanging a couple of things out. Uh, the first thing I wanted to show you was that table. It's a timeline, uh, from when we started three years ago with the master plan that identifies all the key. It identifies all the key, um, milestones of the project. So, uh, we've accomplished a lot in the last three years. All of the board meetings and work sessions are noted on, on there as well. Um, what's not noted on there is the, uh, are the presentations and discussions we had on the rates. It's a separate slide. Yeah, I think Megan prepared. Where's Megan? There she is. So I don't really have any kind of slides to share. I was gonna walk through the. The AIS, the package here, spend a couple of minutes on that. And I guess our objective here was just an open up the questions. There's a lot of information in here. You know, uh, this is a late meeting right now, so I don't want to spend a lot of time going through every single thing, but with the highlights. So the AIS, uh, basically states that Jacobs gave us their ninety percent set. And Kyle Snyder is here, sorry, grand introduction, Kyle Snyder, uh, John Tucker from Maltz.
What is an AIS I'm looking for?
Uh, agenda item summary.
Thank you very much. I think that's a term we used to use about four years ago and it's still stuck in our minds. Sorry about that.
So that, that's a package. So, um, Jacob delivered that on, on December third immediately, Maltz went to work, uh, putting together their ninety percent cost estimate. And they submitted their first number, January seventh, about a month later, uh, forty-eight point five million dollars, um, an increase from the sixty percent. We, or right away started working on value engineering items that Maltz came up with, potential scope modifications. Um, almost that same day, we had numerous meetings throughout the month of January. Uh, with the contractor, uh, his support team and the engineer here Jacobs with his support staff. We went through every line item. I think there's a total of sixty or seventy of them. Um, line item by line item and uh, carefully reviewed each one of them and decided whether we should decline those or accept those. We'll get that also in a second. Uh, after that effort, uh, we managed to save roughly about two million dollars of the price. And brought that price down to forty-three, five. Forty-three, five, uh, which, what, that's the number we're defining as a guaranteed maximum price. I'll talk a little bit about more, more about that in a second. So after that guaranteed maximum price of forty-three, five, we need to add in the project contingencies and we discussed this with Maltz. Um, and Maltz is comfortable with a five percent contingency. Uh, we talked internally, we'd be more comfortable with a higher contingency and also the state is kind of. I guess not requiring, but suggesting that we have a higher contingency for this loan amount that we're going for. So we bought up, uh, ten percent contingency, half of that we're calling a contract contingency. The other half is a horn contingency. That sums up to the forty-seven, five, sorry, forty-seven, nine for the total project cost. Why the increases? So I, I listed some items there, uh, but the big ones were supply chain issues. Along with American iron and steel requirements, Davis bacon wages were up substantially since the sixty percent.
I have a hand on that.
Why is that? That's a federal standard. Why is that up? Why did the Davis bacon wages increase? I'm not sure.
They adjusted for inflation and then their survey information on what actual rate should be, the pay rate.
Isn't that pay rate, that's already established out there somewhere.
Changes all the time. Yeah. So every time you start a project, you get a call.
Is there a copy of those rates out there somewhere? I gotta use my cell phone, Jim. You know, but. Yeah, I'm surprised. That's a surprise. So we're, we're, you pull up from the web, the website, right, some CD P H E, uh, S R F requirements was a link. That John and his team used to come up with the latest wages effective like, I mean, January, I believe, something like that.
Yep, whatever the latest one, yeah, states that you have to be in. And yes, they have gone up, um, mostly in the operator classifications over the last six months. Why? I don't know that I know, but that is the one classification that are, um. I guess that we truly use, um, in that classification and those that went up. Large operators, large dirt work, crane operators, all those have gone up. Think, so you know, it's only a three dollar, I guess, electricians, every piece of labor that goes in went up a little bit.
So that the handout, uh, in front of you, um, we asked to prepare a quick summary on how Davis bacon wages impacted this price. Uh, you can see right there, I mean, usually Davis bacon adds about two dollars per hour from, you know, a non-SRF type project. However, the latest requirements bumped that up to closer to four dollars an hour. Uh, that's substantial. Um, and that's what he used for his ninety percent cost estimate. Uh, all in all, that added about one point six million to the ninety percent cost just from Davis bacon wages. Again, this is a requirement of the S R F law and federal funding triggers the need for that. The second page, um, another reason for the increases of the American iron and steel requirements. Those have gone up substantial since the sixty percent. We listed all the items there and the dollar amounts, uh, estimated. How much is that related? How much of that is related to American iron and steel? Uh, that's another one point six just for the AIS requirements. So all in total of three point two million. And that increase can be attributed to American iron and steel and Davis bacon wages.
And these are currently part of the ninety percent costing that's been updated with the five percent contingency and.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, next paragraph, I wanted to inform everybody that, that Maltz were putting together their ninety percent cost estimate. They did use a competitive bidding process unlike what sixty percent and thirty percent cost estimate did. Uh, in most cases, John, right, you received three bids, uh, primarily from the subcontractors, electrical, mechanical and, uh, patrols. Um, and the good news is, uh, the majority of those bids came in very close to each other. It wasn't like there was an outlier, one electrical company said this and the other two were close. So that's an indication that, that the drawings and specifications were well-prepared and they all understood it the same way. Now granted, there are a few outliers, um, and some of the other vendors that there was an oddball here and there. Uh, but those were not worked into the ninety percent cost estimate. And I believe, now correct me if I'm wrong. The, um, the ninety percent cost estimate is based upon majority of lowest numbers that came in, right? Like for electrical, interstates was the lowest.
It's the most, it's the low reasonable number. There was a few outliers. There was some people that missed, you know, AIS that are, when we look at the good scope and the true subcontractor who uses a low number. Ninety percent of the time, if there's an outlier that there's no explaining why it is, then we will still take into consideration that there's usually a reason or usually. Something they miss, but any low number with a correct scope would.
Um, lastly, on that paragraph on the first page, I just wanted to indicate that there's some time crunches here that we're dealing with. So when the, when the cost was put together, um, you know, John, uh, was able to have most of his vendors and, um. Subcontractors hold the prices for X amount of days. I believe he used ninety for most of them. Some of them were good with that, some of them were not. So, uh, and that ninety days period is up, April first, I believe. So what, what we would like to do here, um, is, you know, flush out as many questions that the board has today. Um, and then come to you next week, Tuesday for a formal approval on this guaranteed maximum price phase to a contract. So in order to minimize future cost es- escalations, uh, John needs to be going on signing contracts. With his sub consultants and all of his vendors issuing purchase orders, that's time consuming. That'll take some while. He can't get that done overnight. So if we don't get an approval next week, Tuesday, that's going to put him, uh, in our cost again in jeopardy. Because some vendors won't hold the prices that long and they might need to rebid. So I, I just wanted to get that out to everybody so they understood that. There's, we're fighting a clock a little bit on this one.
I have a question regarding the, uh.
I have a question regarding the, uh, that says in that box on the sheet, build American, buy American requirements in June.
Yeah.
Uh. What happens that somehow gets triggered or would we? If we get this going prior to that. Are we, do we, are we already good to go or could they come back and say, oh no, it's gonna cost you twenty-five percent?
No, we are good to go based upon what you're reading in front of you and based upon the ninety percent set. And based upon the SRF requirements that were used in John's cost estimate. If, if we, for some reason, we find more funding out there somewhere, right? Um, in July, right? That would trigger that buy American, build American. And that substantially increases the requirements for Davis Bacon and American iron and steel.
So for those who are coming through the SRF program at us, so the June date really refers to the next point in time. That you could apply for the SRF.
Okay.
For the appropriate process. So this is the last round of SRF funding that's not going to be required to meet.
Okay, so question that is, so let's say. You know, we get federal infrastructure money for. You know, I would throw out ten million bucks, it'd be, I think might be helpful, but you split that to these two big infrastructure projects. Does that trigger this, uh, bubba? Since if you were getting the federal, this is maybe, uh.
My understanding with the conversation, so all of those outlines for, um. The specific requirements for build America by America have not been formally adopted and vetted. But all the conversations that we've had with the grants and loans unit folks have indicated that any additional federal dollars that come from the new. Um, federal infrastructure acts that have been approved will require those build America by America requirements. That is not. Um, they haven't defined all those requirements to date, other than to say there will be more stringent than American iron and steel.
Do you, is there any sense, and again, this is obviously the federal level and I don't know what the horse trading up there is going on, but. Is there any sense? I mean, I know people have been following these, these types of discussions for months and months. And they still haven't defined what, what is this applicable for or what are the strengths attached with the federal money? So is there any sense or is it just like? Sometime?
Most of the water-related monies are gonna come through the state SRF programs. Um, so it will fund more SRF loans like the ones that we're applying for. Um, it will also bu- create an SRF grant program, so there is gonna be some, um, fewer strings attached grant dollars. Um, but the indication that we have from like our account director, Ally, I'm not sure what her title is. Our, our account program manager there is that our best bet is gonna be to chase those dollars for singular projects.
The smaller projects that.
That can be completed with a matched set of dollars, yeah. Which we have every intention of doing.
I think we're, I know, I know everybody here shaking trees and. You know, I know that. Thank you.
So just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, um, it's sounding like nothing's finalized yet. But let's say they were to put out a grant or say, hey, we've put five million dollars or whatever towards your water and sewer. If we were to pursue that money, that would potentially change the scope of things we'd have to do in terms of making our project more restrictive. And labor and materials and things like that, if we were to take in those additional monies down the road, potentially is what it seems like.
If it's federal dollars.
Okay.
At this federal dollar, and I, and if it's specifically rated to the, or, or related to this expansion. There's something else to do like our lift station improvement.
Right, right, right. Those ones are fine, but if it's with the expansions, it's gonna adjust everything else attached to that, which would drive our costs up again.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that, that's perfect.
Yeah. So last couple of things on the second page here, just kind of reiterating what that phase one pre-construction contract that we approved last July consisted of. You know, it had an agreement, EJCDC template, uh, and a general conditions, right? And, and those general conditions are germane through the entire project here. Um, so what's moving forward now with, with this next contract, we're calling it a contract amendment. Um, it would include the documents, I'll get to them in a second, the documents in your package. Uh, change order form, we're also kind of referring it to loosely as a change order. But it basically goes back to that pre-construction contract we signed. Amends that. Okay, that's kind of how the mechanics work of that. That makes sense. So, uh, it'll make clear once we get to the next pages here. Um, wanted to mention too, that the ninety percent drawing specs, uh, are loaded on the website. So I think Kelly sent out an email to everybody on that, so if you guys wanna look through that. Uh, you're more than welcome to it. It does include all of the specifications, all of the drawings, they're all PDFs, so you can look at those.
Both of those sets of documents get attached to the contract as well.
That's correct. They, they become part of this contract. Uh, so, oh, I'm sorry.
So that's just where the initial contract, that's the one twenty-seven, two, four was for reconstruction.
Yes.
And then with the additional change order, we'll bring that up to the forty-seven or forty-eight, twenty-eight for the full project, everything.
Yeah, yeah, and that math is worked out on the next page.
Yeah.
Um, it, it, so, you know, after, you know, we get approval from this, you know, first thing that John's gonna do the next morning. Well, first thing, we're gonna get everything executed and signed. He's not gonna do anything until we get a signed contract. He will start executing his contracts with his sub consultants, uh, issuing the purchase orders to lock in those prices. Before, God forbid, they start going up again. So that will be the next step. And then for Jacob's team, um, just a little, little bit of, um, design work, well. I guess modifications of the ninety percent set based upon the BE, uh, items that we selected. Uh, that need to be modified in the set, correct me Kyle? And then he will issue, Jacob's will issue the hundred percent set. Um, April seven is what we're targeting. Did I say that right? Yes. Questions on that? So the next pages are all the contract. That's what the contract will look like for phase two. And there's like a hundred thirty pages of it. The, the first couple of pages are our standard template that we use for contract amendments. This is what we use for amendments to the water plant and, uh, master plan, just basically states the history. For all the dollar months left, and reasons for that. And then it has a signing page. Um, and also just states to the attachments that are relevant to that, to this contract, which would be the ninety percent set. And a GMP package, which is actually attached in the package here. So those, those drawings and specs, all four thousand pages do become part of this contract.
Yeah.
Right? Uh, EJCDC, uh, change order form, uh, this is a pretty standard thing here when we change, uh, contract. It's just a form that we fill out. Here's where it states on the left side of the page what the original contract price was, the one twenty-seven for phase one. Right, we're, we're nearly, um, completed with that. Uh, the increase of forty-seven, nine, which is the GMP plus the contingencies. And adding those two numbers brings the total contract price now to forty-eight, oh, two eight, okay? And on the right side, uh, something I wanted to call everybody's attention, so with John's ninety percent cost estimate. Um, we, we talked about this, uh, in our meetings, we, we extended the substantial completion date by three months. Uh, we were originally looking at a substantial completion date of about June first, roughly mid-June. You, you know, Maltz have indicated that they could still do that, however, um, that would require a lot of overtime, uh, laborers, wages. And with that, Davis Bacon, um, those high rates, that would bring up our cost substantially higher. Than what they are right now. So we decided that it would be okay to push it back to substantial completion on paper. Till August first, twenty twenty-four, right? And the final completion, uh, for final payment, three, uh, yeah, three months later, or. Uh, ten thirty, twenty twenty-four. Now, the other thing here is that John has indicated. If we get this contract signed and he gets his notice of proceed in April, right? Uh, get started early and we have favorable conditions. In all likelihood, things should be online by June first of twenty twenty-four. Okay, and it's a plant will be operating up and running. What happens? Substantial completion is defined in the general conditions, but loosely that means the plant is up and running, it's done. The only thing that's left are a, a bunch of, uh, checklist items. Um, maybe some warranty work and some items, and it could be any number of things that could be fixed. Between substantial completion and final completion while the plant is operating. Any questions on that?
Well, I'm glad you clarified the difference between those. I mean.
Yeah.
Uh, probably the only one here has been involved with something this, the trustee Knutson, at least from trustee standpoint, so. It's good to understand the difference between substantial completion and full.
So.
Any other? It's not substantial.
Similar to getting an occupancy for a building.
To dig all the warranty stuff, there's always punches that I direct. Punch this are done, warranty start, well, punches might be the one. Hey, so, so, so I'm still kind of stuck on the Davis Bacon wage increase. I mean, that doesn't just happen all night right now like that, um. What's going on? Did you see the increases?
Did I see them?
You've seen them, yeah.
Um, in the past, you mean?
No, from this sixty to cents, percent to the ninety.
Yeah, you've seen them, yeah, absolutely.
You saw the government mandate.
Yeah, yeah, uh, so.
At sixty percent, usually, like I said, we add a dollar amount to our crew wage that usually Davis Bacon is. Usually that's two dollars an hour. These new ones, when we add our original crew wage and the new things, that was four dollars an hour. So that two dollars an hour and all of the. I guess, I don't know what the subs are, whether they figured.
That's their problem, right?
But they still have to go by the Davis Bacon.
Yeah, but that's their problem, their subs.
Yep.
Right, okay.
But, um, that is what, like I said, we use, put in two dollars an hour extra to our crew wage at sixty percent and now.
For, for you, not for the subs.
Correct, for all of our, so all of our subcontractors, like the large subs. We go and ask them, they do other, I guess, a budget. For us at sixty percent. They look through the prints and they take that into consideration. And the low electrician was, does happen to be the one that, um, looked at it and spent the time and gave us a price of sixty. What his dollar amount that he includes, I don't know that I know.
That's interstate, right?
Yes.
They're big guys.
But if their wages went up, you know, from sixty to ninety, two dollars, they have no choice but to pay that. Well, that's what it was, but it's only two dollars.
No, I understand, I just wanna make sure I understand, uh, is it, it, they must have included that in their price increase.
They did.
Okay, and then, and, and there's a table out there that shows this.
Their trade.
I've seen it, I got it, you know, I just haven't been on a Davis Bacon wage job in a while. Uh, but so, you, you know, you just look up the table and you get it for wherever we're at, so it's not. I mean, are you seeing an increase every year now? Well, we, we went from sixty to ninety in, how much, six months?
Yep.
Yeah. But when you lock them in, it's. Four bucks actually seems a little light, to be honest with you, per hour for a worker, because it usually goes quite a bit, but.
Well, that's, that's.
All right, so, so when we sign on these ninety, we're, we're done. There's no more, there's no more Davis Bacon increases here.
No, it is locked in at that time.
Assuming he can get all the subcontractor contracts executed.
Yeah.
The loan agreement, that, that Davis Bacon requirement is good for the.
Yeah, good two years. In other words, I just, that shouldn't be one that we should be surprised with.
No.
Not the Davis Bacon.
So they just, so if they decide to go from four dollars extra to eight dollars extra in twenty twenty-three, we've already got this contract, it doesn't matter to us.
Definitely doesn't.
Okay.
We're locked in.
Locked in, and then, and then, now, who wrote the contract, you?
Uh, EJCC.
It's a standard, standard contract.
Okay, I'm not gonna get into too much, but did you, did you see, or have you got some strings? All right.
Okay, um. So the next thing, uh, here's attachment to, sorry, I don't have my computer. Uh, attachment to talks, that this is actually Maltz's GMP package. This is, this is what they submitted to us to review, right? And I wanna call your attention to, uh, the second page here, uh, the table of all the numbers. This is a summary in the bottom, a few rows here on what, how the dollar models turn out. Just repeating what I said when we first started here. The GMP amount, the second black line up there, forty-three million, five hundred forty-six, thousand, three hundred forty-nine. Was listed there. After that, we have the contingencies added on five percent for contractor, five percent for owner. Uh, the total being forty-seven, nine. Now, one thing I wanna get with John here, um, is maybe change the wording on that last line. GMP including contingency, uh, reason why we wanna stipulate with the GMP number is, is we have our stipulation in. Our, um, in our agreement for potential, potential cost allocation saving. So I believe if John comes in, correct me if I'm wrong, less than the GMP, we share some of those savings with them. So it's a good incentive, so, but that's defined up on the GMP number, not the, the GMP with contingency. So we wanted to make sure that we had that clear cut.
So all contingency goes back to the town.
That's correct.
Ninety percent of anything we come in lower, we have to go up invoices to, um, guaranteed maximum price. So if we come in lower, ninety percent of the savings goes back to you.
We can use it.
So we will do everything we can to.
So, so we're gonna get to see that, you're gonna submit.
Oh, every single, yeah, every single payout will out.
You know, I forgot to mention something too, Mayor, uh, with respect to Davis Bacon, um. You know, every pay application that we submit to the state for reimbursement for our SRF law, you know, we have, there's a form that contractor. You know, validating that Davis Bacon wages have been paid.
Have been paid, hours are recorded.
We, there's other, uh, requirements of the owner, uh, we have to do periodic interviews to make sure that, uh. Laborers are being paid.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a form for us to do that. Uh, uh, there's not a lot, like, every month or something like that. Um, but that will be done by, by Thomas Dell.
Yeah, I'm glad they're, make sure people, I, I know how it works.
Price of concrete stunning. The line item. You think, okay, I believe you, I'm just looking, it's a big number.
Yeah.
There is a lot of concrete.
There's a lot in it, so you're getting a decent rate.
Uh, you guys know, I believe you, I was just looking at the line item going, dang, okay.
The one sixty-five?
The yard, wow, that's getting salty.
Uh, next couple of pages, um, list some of Maltz's assumptions, clarifications. We went through this in pretty good detail, uh, over the last month in our BE exercises. Uh, we didn't see any issues with that, and if we did have an issue, we talked through it and made corrections. So you have questions on that, you know, please let us know. And then we get to the fun stuff. The next three pages are a list of all the BE items that, uh, Maltz provided for us. Based upon their review, um, and I, I have to say, this, they did a really good job looking through everything here very closely. And came up with some really good call, potential cost savings. Um, like before, when we submitted the sixty percent, we've got the action items, whether they're accepted or declined. So, accepted meaning, yeah, we will accept this BE item and get those cost savings. Decline means that, means that, just that we're not gonna take these cost savings. Why? Well, that's what we noted here in notes column, uh, that kind of explains the reasons for those declines. Now, I, I recognize that some of those, uh, might need a little bit beefing up. So if you wanna look through those and have specific questions, why was this one declined or something like that, be happy to answer. That we've got pretty much everybody involved here, uh, hopefully we can respond.
Okay, I have four of them.
Okay.
Um, so some of them were good. Um, the first one I had a question on was the deletion of the RASWAS, I think it was. And why we weren't doing that, because that was a little, and, I mean, obviously, I'm sure to you guys that makes sense as to why. But to me, it was a little confusing. I think that's on page.
Tell us why the RASWAS.
That's a huge amount. I, I don't know what that changes, but I just saw the four hundred eighty thousand dollars, I was like, ah.
Changes a complete scope reduction of that work.
Yeah.
Just saying. So the reason is one thing, while we did decline that, and I believe most of you guys were on the tour at the facility. Um, we need to make that safer for our, for our operators doing maintenance in there. You guys need to know what a jungle gym that actually is.
Oh, is that the basement piece down there? Got it, okay, I didn't know, I was like, I, I, okay.
So that's where we're, we're allocating some of that money to make that a cleaner, more operational friendly type basement.
Okay.
With some safety measures in mind for us moving forward, so we can get that right finally. With some safety measures in mind for us moving forward. So we can get that right finally.
Gotcha. So that basically, when you were down there telling us about like, I think it was you that pulled your back out down there, this four hundred eighteen is clearing up that mess.
We're going to fix that.
Okay, that, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
I will say that it's just decline, but that's kind of on a different list of scope related contingency, right? So we, we want to do that work, but if we do run into some trouble later on, and we don't have any choice, we have a few scope items that we can then pull the trigger on.
And that is already scheduled for the very end of the entire project.
Okay.
We would take the outside down a little, a little maintenance type.
Okay, okay. And then the blowers, that was another one that was declined.
Trustee here, could you give us?
Sorry, thirty-five. I didn't write the line items down when I did that.
Okay.
No, I was looking at my notes. So that's thirty-five. And it says longevity of equipment and future cost savings. So what was the difference, I guess, in longevity of what was potentially being proposed? So like, how much are we seeing in a decrease in life expectancy on those?
I don't know what's exactly life expectancy. So we have two different manufacturers, have different floor curves for different operations. And we took the, got the boiler curves in a submittal from them. They did not quite meet the lower end of the. Aeration needed. And I guess it would be hard on those blowers to meet that lower end of that aeration. So I guess it's not. If we could have done it and workers could do that, we would have accepted it. But further investigation, there was, I guess, a group consensus that I don't know that. It would work well for that condition.
When, when John says lower curves, he really means the kind of the efficiency and the performance of the curve as it's turned up and down, what the balance of the lowers themselves. And the engineers make a certain assumption. When they're designing the process that it can be turned down to certain levels. This one was marginal at best in terms of performance at those. And you get off on the edges of the curve, not only does it get more efficient, but it's harder on the equipment.
Okay.
And you know, it makes that now from the current blowers that, that were run from sixteen upgrade, those weren't sized properly. Kind of be that same boat where they're not really operated the way that they should.
Okay.
In five years, we've blown two of those up because of the operational.
Got it. Okay.
Type design issues that we've had. Those are like twenty-five thousand a piece to rebuild.
Okay.
So we need to keep one that's going to last us a good long time.
Okay. Thank you. And then screw, excuse me, screw press platform. Let me find the number.
Forty-eight.
Yep, forty-eight. What is that? It just, I don't know what that is. And I know, I don't have a problem with safety concerns and access, but I'm just trying to understand what that is.
It's all safety and access. Basically, you have two large units that you water your sludge that are four to five foot up. And it's the area around that so that you can get in there and work on whether. If you didn't, you'd have to have a mobile platform and bring in the scaffold or do whatever.
Got it. Okay. So basically, say this around to bring in equipment to access the stuff.
It's like a catwalk around this piece of.
Okay. Got it. Okay. And then the last one I had a question on. Was the aluminum checkerd platform. It's down towards the end here. Fifty-three. And so what was that?
So in the headworks channels themselves, it was changing, I guess, from a plate with a gasket material to a grating. And they have done that, but I guess it degrades the work area and it lets those gases and the water and the smell come through a little bit more. So was, I guess, somewhat of a order, somewhat of a nicer environment, whether you could get by with grading or whether we should. Keep the environment in that headworks a little better with the chair plating gasket.
Gotcha. So if we went with the checkerd plating, it would cause more of those gases and stuff that our guys are having to work in. Is that accurate?
It would be up from the floor level, cause a tripping hazard. That's one of our concerns. And also longevity. I mean, that piece of equipment would have worn out pretty soon and we have to replace it. So that's, so that's the reason why we declined that. We went looking at the original design for longevity.
And what was the original design over the platform?
It was what's listed there, aluminum checkerd plate.
They kept it.
Yeah.
So the plate doesn't sit up, the plate is flat versus the grading would stand up or?
So it's flush with the concrete. The other design was, I forget what kind of. Grading with a rubber mat over the top. It keeps your kind of gases in. It doesn't quite lose the job, but it's also a reliable item.
Got it. Okay. That's, that's one. I thank you. That helps.
Okay. Next page just covers some constructability items that we discussed in our meeting last week. Made sure the engineer was all done with, was all, was all those with those which they were, they weren't, not at all.
We're, we're still reviewing a couple of them.
Also.
Just to confirm.
Then based upon what you reveal, what you find and what you tell contractor and us, we might delete one of those or strike one of those or modify the text.
But none of these have cost implications.
In the last page I have is the font comparison, thirty, sixty and ninety. And this one was. The dollar amounts between the sixty and ninety, along with some notes explaining, you know, why the increase, why the decrease. Or have the day entertaining any questions that you guys have on that, even through the week here, if you catch up some questions, please let us know. Following that comparison page is over a hundred pages of the cost estimate that Walt's put together line item by line item by line. That's, that's just the work that went into preparing.
That's also the kind of documentation we need to track things during construction.
Real job.
Yeah. And just I had a couple of questions on the general conditions spreadsheet. So I guess on page three thirty-five. And I was just curious, there's a couple of things I was not sure whether on there. So the first one was, we're paying twelve thousand dollars for a cell phone over the course of the project. Is that like going to be a dedicated cell phone for the use of the town of Wellington? Or is what, what is?
Going to be the onsite superintendent to call for concrete. It's the onsite, there's usually three cell phones per project. That are onsite, those guys using, I mean, they call for inspections, they call for, so we issue the superintendent and field engineer a cell phone.
And so those are dedicated phones that are only for our project. They're not being used for, okay, perfect. And then, and it's three, you said, okay, is that right? Okay, perfect. I was looking at the pricing like that's one cell phone. I used to work in cellular. It's like the three makes sense.
Per month per cell.
Okay. The other question I had is there is one on here for advertising. What are we advertising for or?
We have a little bit in there so that we can advertise for carpenters, labors.
Okay, just getting workers and stuff like, okay.
That's probably pretty smart.
Sure. No, that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure like, what do we? And then the other piece I had was, there was a cost for internet. That was added in there as well. Internet service, I think, was about seventy-five hundred dollars. And what is that for?
So all of our job site trailers will have internet access because we work off servers back at the home office almost every time.
And we don't have it, we don't have internet onsite that they would be able to access at the wastewater plant?
If you do, we bog it down pretty good because we do go through.
We need to keep.
Okay, okay. Okay, that, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
Is that all you got? What else we got? Just, just moving forward. So we got March fourth, our loan approval with the Colorado Power Authority. Right? This one, they say yes or no. Hopefully, they're going to say yes. After that. We start some, they start selling bonds right, right after that. And that's where we final, finalize the interest rates and the actual loan amount.
Yeah, the loan amounts and the bond sale will define that when the bond sale takes place will define the interest rate that we get. We won't actually know that until that happens at the end of April.
So what do you got to go down there and get in line and ready for the bell ring? You're right, exactly. So you, you, you take this home, all of us and read over. We got questions. We got the next board meeting. We're going to try to get this done, right?
Yeah, just keep in mind, just a little favor here. So, you know, for, for next week, next Tuesday's board meeting, I have to have this package loaded by Thursday, right? So if you give me us questions as soon as possible. So we have, we basically got tomorrow to respond. That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, we would love to get those questions as soon as possible.
Okay.
We, we are.
Like tomorrow.
Tomorrow. In like four hours.
Your meter running here. You got to get him in there. Meter's running, literally. Okay, is that it? We're good?
That's all I got.
Thank you, folks.
Good presentation. Thank you very much.
Thanks. We got one more item to do tonight.
No more. We started at five thirty.
Okay. You're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kelly Hodling, Deputy Town Administrator. The item for you is discussing budget reductions, transfers from the general fund to the water and sewer fund. On January twenty-fifth, the staff was directed to find budget reductions in the total of two million, three hundred and forty-three thousand. And that would funding would be ten percent of the transfers from the general fund to the water fund, ten percent transfers from the general fund to the sewer. And then we discovered that we need to backfill one point three million of that American Rescue funding that was booked as a revenue. That will be going to the water fund. So we have been collectively working as a leadership team to find this two point three million dollars for budget reductions. Our proposal is in the packet tonight, and you will see that there is removing seven hundred thousand dollars in the Harrison Avenue expansion. When we put together our capital improvement plan, that is usually early in the summer, we continuously tweak that information. And we have originally that, that we'd need to carry over about one million dollars. Turns out in December, we, we got hit with some bills, we paid them out. And so now we only have to, it's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars remaining. So we're not, it's not cutting money. It's just saying that we're not reallocating it into this year. And so that's seven hundred thousand. We'd like to remove a hundred and fifty thousand. That project for the T-bar lot, we looked again at the radius for the Harrison Avenue expansion. The off-street parking requirements for this building is seventeen spots. We have thirty-two spots within that seven hundred foot radius. So that's more than enough for the, the building needs. And then I know some of our land use code information for the on-street parking credits will change. So we'd like to remove that to save the town money. We'd like to delay a point-to-point wireless connectivity, and that's a hundred thousand dollars. And then Old Town Streets Repair delay that to future years, five hundred thousand dollars. And then I know that this was talked a lot about at a resident roundtable, that we constantly do our best to save the town money. And through the finance departments looking through and wrapping up twenty twenty-one's budget, we have identified over eight hundred thousand dollars. Of budget savings that we will, would like to carry over into this year if the board allows. So with that, that identifies that gap that we needed to align with the water and sewer funding that we needed. Like a lot of things, we do need a quick turnaround because we have a budget amendment that we'd like to have in front of the Board of Trustees on February twenty-second. So I will pause and open it up to the Board of Trustees to discuss these items that staff has identified for discussion.
Question, Kelly, on the T-bar parking lot, I know the town had to go and get a. They had to go to Board of Adjustments.
Yes.
To get approval for that. Was that additional parking lot that we were doing with the T-bar, was that a part of that approval? It was, was that a part of the decision making that caused the Board of Adjustments to make that decision to grant town approval before we just pull out of that was, or was that just an unrelated?
That a Board of Adjustments meeting was about setbacks, actually, as we wanted to approach a little bit more. So that was not about.
It wasn't my party. Okay.
No, sir.
Got it. Okay. Never mind then. Thank you.
That Old Town Streets repairs for one year. One year, one year.
The late one year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're in the final year of the program. So we're proposing to just push that last year back.
Does that include any like sidewalks and other things? Or is that just repairing problems that we have with streets?
Project you saw this past summer in Long Dirt Street and some other areas where we, we repair the curving gutter, typically replace the curving gutter, some sidewalks, some ramps. And build an overlay or totally reconstruct the paving in the Old Town areas. So it's. You see it in four, five, six different spots around Old Town.
So the idea is just delay it here. The remaining.
Finish up that program next year.
Did we record any kind of parking sharing with T-bar for that project? We didn't. We did not. No.
Don't have an agreement. And, and I mean, I don't know any going in, and the cost probably will be more than that anyway.
Yes, I think with the drainage issues that are in that alley and additional concerns, I think it would be much more expensive.
I guess my only question is, are you good with the changes? Guys can operate.
Staff is, yes, we properly embedded a lot of different options. And I think this is the most prudent decision moving forward of how we can cut two point three million.
Two point three million, still provide the services you guys and to do a good job at it and all that.
Yes.
Because we didn't want to. Cause problems. Well, anyone got any question? We're going to talk about this at the board meeting.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I had was, and I emailed these to Patty and Kelly earlier, was I know we do have some different plans ongoing that we could potentially delay. And we have some vehicle replacement, this thirty thousand dollars. We do also have our board outreach and discretionary fund that we could reduce some of the money in that. That would just be things that we, if, once we look at what we're doing. And then we also have, again, about a hundred thousand dollars in travel and training that we spend on stuff that I think. Would be things like the Old Town Street repairs would be something I prefer not to delay. That's one of the things that we hear from people quite a bit is they'd like to see the roads better.
So let me ask you something about that, because this is a word search. And so, you know, how come you're saying they don't need travel and training? How did you say that?
The reason.
I mean, I don't.
No, I don't. I don't know. I'm not saying that there's not value to it, but I'm saying something that does not define our ability to operate. We are not going to be unable to come in and do our jobs tomorrow because we weren't able to go to a conference. Do we get good information?
I disagree with that.
We are going to have.
They have to maintain licenses and a lot of that's.
And their licenses require them to fly halfway across the country to maintain their licenses.
Sometimes they can take classes in those conferences and it's more cost effective to get those CE bundles in those conferences than it would be to take the classes individually.
I think you have to look at what it is. I mean, if it's safety, I mean, so staff, I mean, there's P P E with your, you know, masks and safety glasses and gloves. Could be with cost of chemicals, but there's OSHA certifications for working in enclosed spaces. I mean, it's a high risk area, working at heights. There's then the certifications by the state for operators for water and wastewater. I mean, without those certifications. We can't run our utilities. I mean, so some, some things like, okay, if you don't want to go to the C M L conference, that's one thing. But I mean, I, I, I think if. Again, I wanted to look at it, but I would, I would certainly be wanting to understand what exactly any impact on worker safety or certification. Because I don't, I think a blanket statement like we should just get rid of all this. I don't, I don't think that's particularly nuanced and.
I mean, if, sorry.
Please go on.
And I, I don't disagree. If there are things where people are required by law to have a certification and they cannot safely operate something, that's fine. But there's a big difference between, you know, flying someone halfway across the country to go to something and stay in an expensive hotel for something that is valuable, but not required for safety versus being able to help people.
Um, I think that. Reducing training and associated travel with that is, I don't think that's negotiable. I think there is, within our strategic, strategic plan, we talked about operational strength. And training our employees and ensuring that they have the skills to be successful and want to work for us because they're gaining skills is that organizational strength. Putting someone in a work environment where you're not investing in their health and safety and encouraging them to be better in the position is the best way to lose valuable staff. I have a master's degree in organizational leadership, and this is one-on-one how you help people to be their best and to work their hardest for you. So. So there is no intention, I can guarantee, of excessive use or taking advantage of training and travel costs to stay in places where conferences are. That's usually maybe the going rate, I know there was a question about the Nashville Hotel. I would like to go to that hotel, because that is an extremely amazing rate for that location, so everything is scalable, and you have to consider the context. And training is essential. It's, it's not something we can skim on, so if we want to look at it in more detail, sure, we could do that, or if you want to have an idea of what the trainings are planned, that's fun. But I can guarantee you, this is one of those situations where this money is set away in our budget to offer these services to our employees. But they're not necessarily going to be tapping that out to the last penny, just because they can. When we stayed at a hotel in CML, we didn't stay at the hotel where the conference was occurring, because that was more expensive. We stayed across the freeway, and those are the same considerations they make for every travel plans. So there is no intention of, let's max out our budget if possible, based on where we get to go and what we're doing, I guarantee you, that's not the case. We worked with Patty, I don't know if you did, the same thing as I did, where we talked about accommodations and where we would stay. I didn't accept any per diem, you know, those kind of things, those are the cost savings that she works through for every travel situation, so to, to, and what I worry about is that there's an accusation that someone's taking advantage of these funds, and that is very hurtful, that's almost more hurtful than not allowing them to participate in those trainings. So we trust our staff, we hire amazing people, and they deserve this, this is an investment, so that's how I feel about training.
Thank you, so I would like to address that there is not an accusation that I am saying people are abusing the funds. What I am saying is that, yes, these are things I understand, doing that from an organizational standpoint, investing in employees, and that's good. But I'm saying that also has to be balanced with the impact of what we're doing and what we're imposing on our residents, right? And we just impose, thankfully, you guys did a great job, water rates didn't have to go up again, but we just imposed on our residents an increase on their sewer budget. And so when we look at things that as a town, that says, okay, are these crucial things that must happen for us to be able to operate? Yes, we have to do those, but those are things that, yes, they're nice for our employees, it makes them feel good, it helps them to grow, but can we for a year say to our employees, hey, we are in a tight spot, our residents are struggling, everyone's in a hard place, so for a year, we're gonna cut back on some of the travel and training, I know it's great to send you to this, our plan is to send you back next year, but for a year, we're gonna cut back on some of those, I'm not making the accusation that people are overspending, I'm not making the accusation they're taking advantage of it, I'm not saying that it's bad, I'm saying from my perspective, we are asking our residents to do with less, to help deal with the crisis we're in with our water and sewer treatment plant. What I would like to see is us as a town saying, we are also going to cut back on some of these other things, even if it's not a massive amount, that we're gonna do with a little bit less as well, that's where I'm coming from, I want us to consider not just the staff, we also need to consider the residents that we and the staff serve in this town.
Which I think we all do.
About us.
I agree, I agree that we definitely should consider all those people, I know other ideas, but training is essential. So when it asks, is it essential or not, it absolutely is essential in my life, so that's my statement.
Well, I have a question, I mean, this whole thing about cutting costs. As far as I know, and I don't, well, this is a question asked of, for I don't know that cutting general fund expenses is, I don't know how with Tabor, and the SRF state revolving fund loan conditions, I think it's pretty clear that what we can and can't do, so if we cut an extra two million dollars out of the General Fund, which I'm not suggesting, I'm not entirely sure how that gets back into water or other enterprise fund, and whether that in fact will deliver any reasonable price or cost savings. I mean, we just got the GMP for wastewater at forty-seven million dollars, and I mean, I, I don't know how much money we can divert out of the General Fund legally or otherwise, and whether that's gonna have any impact on rates for residential users, I mean, I, I've not seen there's some possibilities, but I don't see that generating a huge cost savings, but I, you know, somebody else, somebody knows.
What's the ten percent, so the Water and Sewer Fund, the revenues can only accept ten percent of the revenues annually. So that's where that, the number.
Yeah, so can I speak to that, because I know I'm the one that keeps bringing this up, and I know I've talked to Dan, but so correct me if where I'm wrong, Dan. Because you and I have gone back and forth on this, it's, Kelly's absolutely right, Tabor says, we as a general fund can only give ten percent of revenues to water and sewer.
Ten percent of the.
Ten percent of the revenue, yeah, can't come in, so right, if the enterprise can only accept five hundred thousand, even if I save two million, I can't give two million into the water fund, can't do it, Tabor keeps me from running it. Currently, we already authorized that, awesome, good, good job, staff, good job, board, we authorized that five hundred thousand into water fund, just, we'll call it five hundred thousand. Currently, the sewer, the water fund over here is taking roughly nine hundred thousand dollars, and it is transferring it into the General Fund for indirect costs. We, we don't know exactly what it's for, we're still trying to work through that.
Reimbursement of expense.
Reimbursement of expenses, and that money is coming out of the water fund and going in to the General Fund. That is completely separate, because nothing is coming into the water fund, it's money going out. So if we can say, all right, we can cut our budget somehow by nine hundred thousand dollars in the General Fund to cover those reimbursements from the water fund, that nine hundred dollars is not transferred into the water fund, it just stays there, it never gets transferred out, which means that money can now be used to pay for the plant expansion, to pay for upgrades, to pay for staff, to pay for whatever, and so that's where it doesn't go afoul of the ten percent, because we're not putting more money in, we're just not taking money out.
So, so I wanna, I wanna, and I get what you're saying. I just want to bring up, okay, there's a couple items here that we're not getting to.
Yep, yep.
One is the board outreach discretionary fund, the other one is this finance committee that somebody come up with an idea.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to see that finance committee go deal with that.
Okay.
We already went through a big old, we signed off, I think it'd be great to have that roundtable people involved with this thing, get with our staff down the road and figure out how to do all that, and do it right, rather than just because they did a great job of coming up with two point three million out of something.
Yeah, quickly.
They came from somewhere, so they're gonna take some sacrifices, the last thing I want to do is take hard hats and safety glasses too. You know, so I think, I think they've done enough for now, right? And go ahead.
Yeah, and, and my, my fear is, we can't keep just throwing things out there that we could potentially cut without those considerations. I mean, the fireworks have come up several times, of let's just cut fireworks. Well, I think the financial committee will be able to look at that and actually be able to make sound decisions with the, the research that's needed, but we can't say, let's just cut training, when we throw out those random things, it's hurtful for one, because those are the things that are needed for our employees. I think if we're going to really consider making our budget efficient, then we should do it through the same process, it's been so successful with the residents' roundtable. But we can't just keep throwing things out there, what about this, what about that? Without all those considerations, and we need to make sure it's, it's done correctly, and I think, like you said, the resident roundtables already proven very successful, we can get those eyes on it, get another perspective, and actually spend the time that we need to find the efficiencies, rather than
Slash and burn.
Yeah, yeah, I think we should do it strategically, and I think everybody's on board for that, we can talk about it more the next time we have that.
No, and it has to be done, it gotta be done. But I like the idea of this finance committee doing some home, doing some work on this, I really do.
I agree, it was my idea with Patty, I think it's amazing.
I'd like to see your idea go forward here. And then Nick.
Yep.
Let's charge them with the idea of doing that, rather than us beat this thing up, you know?
I understand, and the reason I brought this up, so you guys are clear on this, I want to make it very clear. I am not coming out here trying to have to go after staff and to make problems, which has been what has been communicated several times. I see it as my job, this has been brought up by other board members many times, is we have a fiduciary responsibility to the town, and that means looking at things and saying, do we need to look at cutting things out? And sometimes the answer is yes, and sometimes the answer is we need to, now, that's us as a whole board, right? The whole board's decision said, no, we don't want to cut those things out, that's okay. But that doesn't change that my job as a trustee is still to say, these are things that we need to look at, and the rest of the board can choose not to, that's okay.
No, we're all.
Let me clarify, the rest of the board can choose to say, we're gonna wait to look at this in another manner. We don't want to look at this right the second, like I was saying, right, I was saying, let's just go pull stuff out. The rest of the board said, no, we want a different process, we want to wait to get a finance committee, that's fine, that's the board's job to make those decisions, so now we're doing that. I'm still going to, as I'm looking at things, and we're being asked to look at, where do I think, I'm not gonna all of a sudden say, I don't think we should look at cutting money here. My opinion still stands that these are areas that we should look at, and that's what we're being asked for, is our opinions of that, so I would appreciate as the rest of the board, just as you all have your opinions of what is important, I'm not telling you, you have to follow my opinion. There's seven of us here, and if six of us think otherwise than I do, that's fine, we go with what everyone else says, but don't put it out as I'm trying to attack staff and get rid of people, I'm trying to look at what are things that are gonna have less of an impact on our residents, and then if we explore those ideas and find they don't work, I'm totally fine with that, I brought several things on the VE that I was like, why are we, as soon as our staff explained why we needed those, I'm okay with keeping them in, I'm not sitting there saying, oh, it's a they explained to me, okay, we're guys are not, okay, that's fine, but until we've answered those questions, and that's what I appreciate that we're doing now, is we're starting to get the answers to the questions, because once I have answers, my opinion often changes.
Well, I think, I think that you've done exactly what you set out to do, and I think that everybody is on board with that, and I think that we accomplished the first one of those goals, and that's to get to two point three four three, and that's good enough for me for now. As the chair, I gotta keep it moving, so I'm gonna let that go with that.
I'm good.
All right. What else? Want to go home?
Yep.
Staff, anything else from us, are you guys good?
No.
Okay.
Right, thank you, guys.